Great. Well, I think hopefully Laura will be joining us soon. So I'm going to get started because it's 7:03 and I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order. It's Wednesday, December 15th, 2021 at 7:09. We have present, the board members present are Martina, Maya Gordon, Mary. I saw her. Mary, you want to turn on your camera? Great. Judy, myself Judy, Alicia Hayes will be joining us at 7:30. So she'll be joining the meeting a little bit late. And now we have Laurel. So we have everyone but Alyssa Alicia present. Thank you. So please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapulia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 through 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from Western Oregon, some of the Kalapulia were moved to the Grand Ron Reservation and some were moved to the Celestials Reservation. It's important to note that all of Lane County was an important trading and gathering area for camis and other resources. During the restoration era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as a service area of the Confederate tribes of Cus, Lower Amquah, and Sayusla Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron Indians, the Confederate tribes of Celeste Indians, and the Kokeel Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Amquah Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their own. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. Thank you. Right. So it's time for the agenda review. Are there any questions or corrections to the agenda that anyone would like to make at this time? Okay, so all right, I don't see any hands up. So the agenda stands as it is. So I'm going to now ask the superintendent Superintendent Vanderkar to make her comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Newman and 4J board members. We enter the winter break with good news about changing the requirement to wear masks outside at recess and on school property. We've also been granted the ability to test close contacts with a test to stay program. If a parent approves, a student has who has been designated as a close contact with someone who was diagnosed with COVID-19, we are now able to keep students who test negative in school instead of sending them home to quarantine. Recently, track coaches were given indication there would be no middle school track season this year. There has not been a final decision made yet because there are issues with not having enough transportation and establishing an appropriate volunteer base. The last discussion regarding middle school track I was involved in was in the early fall when we were forced to make difficult decisions about pausing student routes to school. In the last months, we have added more bus drivers to the team, but still do not have an appropriate number to add the extra routes needed in the early afternoon for track. I'd like to add that I believe middle school track is an amazing opportunity for our students, but we need to make sure we have transportation and the appropriate adult supervision needed to run a safe program. District leaders will consider the decision again after winter break. District leadership understands each middle school has different level of resource and we will use the equity lens to determine inequities for every middle school across the district. As you know, in the last two weeks, 4J and our neighboring districts have received concerning posts on social media. Some posts were directed at individuals and some targeted groups within our community. Last Wednesday, I joined the principal of North Eugene High School, the secondary director, 4J's school safety director, and a detective from Eugene Police Department investigating Instagram posts sent to the school community. On Thursday, I joined Miles Pendleton from the NAACP, Linda Hamilton, president of Blacks in Government, and many North Eugene staff members to listen to the concerns of members of affinity groups and white allies at North. The message is clear. Students and staff want a swift and definitive response to stop this behavior. In the same week, I met with Mika Contreras from Calc, board member Rabasa, Linda Hamilton, Michelle Sue, Larry Williams, one of our two directors of equity and inclusion, and Christine Nesbit, 4J's general counsel, to discuss a policy solely focused on racial harassment. We're meeting again on the subject in early January and a draft policy will hopefully be shared with the board on January 12th. In addition, 4J's Equity Inclusion Department is working on creating a webinar for students and staff to be shown during advisory at each secondary school in 4J. They have content selected and are working to produce the video that will reiterate to students what to do if they witness or experience harassment. A similar webinar will be created for parents in the community to share the school responses to a threat. The district has a comprehensive and detailed regulation about how to respond to bias incidents, hate symbols, and hate crimes. And principals receive training on it over the summer. To take it to the next level, we are working on creating a checklist for each principal to work through when these incidents occur. We're also working to identify educational resources for when incidents are substantiated because taking a disciplinary approach without education will not lead to transformation. The district's bias incident advisory team is meeting this week to discuss how to support a consistent response across the district when information on an incident or threat is being shared via social media. I'd like to share the email that was sent to 4J families on December 13th. Dear families, recently we have seen multiple incidents of concerning posts on social media. Some of these have targeted groups within our school community, used racist and hateful language, and caused concern for safety. I want to say clearly and unequivocally that bigoted and threatening speech has no place in our schools or our community. Eugene School District 4J will not tolerate hateful words or actions, bigotry, or any form of racist behavior in our classrooms, school, or on our grounds. There is simply no place for it. The district has worked with law enforcement to investigate these incidents, identify the people responsible where possible, and take appropriate follow-up actions. While investigations take time and we are limited in the information we can share, the schools have been have communicated to families and work to support students in each case. None of the posts have been found to pose a credible threat to school safety. These actions on social media have caused strong feelings and impacts for many members of our school community. Hurt, anger, disgust, fear, and substantial disruption to our schools. We are united in support of our students and staff who are Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We support our students who speak out against racism and bigotry, and we ask our students to speak up when they see or hear something that is hateful, hurtful, or a possible threat of harm to themselves or others. To share concern, please contact the school administration or make a report through Safe Oregon at saforgan.com. All of our students and staff deserve to feel safe and supported at school. In 4J, we will continue to work toward ensuring that our district advances racial equity and our schools are a place where all of our students feel they belong. We ask our students and families to partner with us to help create a school community where all students and staff feel safe and welcome. Together, we are strong. Sidney Vanderkar. And I'd like to end my comments by saying thank you to everyone who called, texted, or emailed in the last week who said they were willing to step in and support our schools. Our community is amazing because of people like you. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Now it's comments from the board chair. So first of all, I want to welcome everyone to the school board meeting tonight and thank you for joining us and for caring about our schools and for showing up. This has been a very disturbing week. We've had students who are being bullied and harassed because of the color of their skin and their religion. And it's really very frightening for students, for staff, for parents, and for the whole community. These kinds of actions really undermine our students' ability to feel safe and feel a sense of belonging. Bigotry and racist and anti-Semitic behaviors are unacceptable and won't be tolerated in our schools. 4J schools really have no place for hate, and we will do what it takes to protect the safety of our students and staff. I want to acknowledge and thank the superintendent and the 4J staff for taking immediate actions in response to these threatening events. I know the district immediately got law enforcement. You heard the details from the superintendent to get to trace the sources of these posts. And the response will be immediate and it will be focused on the goal of achieving transformative justice. Unfortunately, you know, as we know, specific information is understandably confidential, but we know that these actions are being addressed. I know the superintendent and 4J staff counselors and trusted community partners spent time with the students who were targeted and with other students to provide emotional support and information and a safe way to process the events and their feelings. Communications were sent that you just heard to staff, parents, and students. And these supports will continue as long as they're needed. And I, for one, I'm really looking forward to hearing and seeing in January the work of the on the policy for racial harassment. And most, I'm also looking forward to the implementation and what we're doing to really enhance and make that consistent across the district. This week, I got to hear from the group of high school students from Southern Oregon talk about safe and trauma-informed schools. They started with a quote that I think really sums up what's happening in schools across the nation and right here in Eugene. The quote is, "When life gets hard, schools get harder." The students went on to describe what they think makes a safe and trauma-informed school environment. First, safe spaces in schools. Second, positive and safe student and teacher dynamics. Third, great principals who are personable and know each student. Fourth, the absence of daily microaggressions. And fifth, students and staff that notice things that are good and that are kind. Last night, I had the opportunity to think about safe schools in another way. I intended a forum organized by the Cheetah PAC, which is the Chavez Elementary School PTO. They invited city counselors, the Eugene Police Department, school board members, the Westside Jefferson neighbors, 4J district and school staff, and parents. We had heard from parents and staff and community, what we heard from our parents, staff, and community members was, I would say, alarming. It was about needles, urine, vandalism, swearing, human waste, knives, fires, and threats on the walking and biking routes to school and on the school grounds. This is truly an unacceptable situation for our elementary students to experience daily. The forum was held to highlight the complexities of this problem and to establish a collaborative working relationship with partners and to identify strategies that can be implemented to alleviate this unsafe situation. It was a good start, and I want to keep up the momentum. I know we, as a school district, are committed to be a strong partner, and I really appreciate the work of the Chavez parents and staff to make this happen. It was really a very informative and constructive conversation. Thank you. Next on the agenda are items raised by the audience. And we had 10 speakers signed up this evening, but I believe one could not make it, so we have nine. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu/board-publiccomment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7706 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. You can see on your screen, there is a blue sky timer. So we are actually trying out tonight a physical timer on our screen so that we aren't going to be getting our little signs from Lisa. The timer will be showing the time move down. So we'll see how that works. So I'd like to welcome the first speaker to the group, which is Katie Kennedy. Is she here?
Katie Kennedy is not in the audience yet, so we've moved to the second speaker, Jason Miller, who's on screen now.
Thank you. Okay, Jason, you can unmute. Great.
I remembered how to do that. Sweet.
You'll be our first to test out our blue sky timer.
Okay, well, my name's Jason Miller. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm coming to speak on behalf of track and field at the middle school level. For the last two seasons, I constantly, every week, as every middle school coach gets these questions that are asked to us. When is middle school track and field going to happen? Obviously, we know two years ago was the start of COVID, so that was an issue. When the high schools had it last year, parents constantly asked, why isn't middle school track and field happening when the high schools are having it? As the fall has begun and high school has had more sports, the same question has been asked. Why isn't middle school already planning for track and field when the high school levels get it? Other questions, why are the Portland school districts having middle school track this year? Why are Junction City district having middle school track this year, and yet 4J is still a possible maybe? If the district is following the OSA guidelines for for sports and middle schools mirror the high school programs, that means the middle school level is following the high school level. So why aren't we having track? Seems to be an issue that we have about equity that comes up, and this is our coach's biggest concern. If there's no middle school track and field, this will be the first time in a middle schooler's lifetime that they will have no track and field throughout the three years they're going to be there. There's no middle school track this year. Some parents can still afford private coaching clubs or the ability to transfer their kids somewhere else to get these. Not all parents are going to be able to do this. This is a huge equity problem, and we're really worried as coaches about this kind of issue. Okay? They also miss out on the opportunities to be part of a team, set individual goals for themselves. And these are middle school students who are competing against other 4J middle school students. So the COVID shouldn't be much of an issue for tracing them in the schools. Okay? High school is a tryout sport. How are you going to be able to try out for track and field if you've never had the chance to try? It's a serious issue that we're worried about. Madison Elmore, who you might know as a UFO runner, she took state at her local high school, 4J, in the 1500. That all began because she had the opportunity to run at the middle school level and be a part of a team. If she didn't have that opportunity, would she be in college having that opportunity now? Shouldn't every middle schooler get that same opportunity? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Is Bella Donahue here?
Yeah.
Great. Hi Bella.
Hi.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Of course. Okay, my name is Bella Donahue, and I am a former Spenceby Middle School student and athlete. I am now a sophomore at South Eugene High School, participating on the Honorable Student Government and Competitive High School Sports. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak this evening. I'm going to be addressing the issues of the further cancellation of middle school track and field. I understand that this is the second year in a row that middle school track and field has been canceled out of safety concerns for COVID, and that middle school sports will be reevaluating in the spring, likely leading to a third year of cancellations. The unfortunate news is that even though I am a sophomore in high school, I was the last class to be able to participate in middle school sports as a seventh grader. For me, middle school track and field opened up a whole new world in terms of the importance of exercising the fundamentals of team support and the focus needed to compete in individual events. I look back on those days as a time of critical development for me and others that supports health, mind, relationships, and confidence. When I step back and take a look at the opportunities still available to middle schoolers, I can honestly say that it looks depressing and bleak. We appear to be living in a world where paranoia and fear exist instead of innovation and teamwork. Students with families that have disposable incomes can sign up to safely participate in club sports, but it's not the same as representing your middle school, and most students do not have the financial resources to be on a club team. Adding on to that, because of more and more isolation in 4J not having a plan to safely function, I see the staggering effects of mental health gripping students in Eugene and Springfield into deep depression. The damage, the damaging consequences to students not being able to develop will be long lasting and well past the time people at this hearing will hold their 4J roles. The district is clearly taking a win-lose approach when it could easily support track and field in a safe and responsible way. If 4J followed OSA safety guidelines, we could achieve a win-win for the community and students. The frustrating issue for many students, coaches, and families in Eugene and Springfield is that there are safe ways to operate as all of their middle school districts function in the state, as well as 4J area high schools. It is not fair that high school track and field gets provided transportation and middle schools do not. We would also be of much appreciation if 4J would publicize where resources are needed so that willing and able members of the community can reach out and provide support. And even if we do not have buses, the least 4J could do would be to let students practice and belong to a team. Simply put, the district has had time to put conditions in place for middle school sports to occur, especially track and field, which is an outdoor, non-contact sport and easily socially distanced. 4J prides itself on equity, though the board cannot seem to make an equitable decision regarding middle school sports that have been continuously taken away. I'm urging the district to commit to making middle school sports available. Students are the reason the district employees and elected officials exist. So it's past time that middle school students physically and mental, physical and mental health are prioritized. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's really wonderful to hear from students. Yeah, thank you. Okay, we have Angela, Angelina Mitchell.
We don't see Angelina Mitchell in the audience yet, so Jeff Parker is coming in as the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Newman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Chair Newman and Vice Chair Shabram, members of the board and Superintendent Vanderkar. My name's Jeff Parker, and I'm the Executive Director of Northwest Youth Corps and the Twin Rivers Charter School. I want to begin by stating that the Northwest Youth Corps faculty, staff, board of directors, and 22,000 alumni stand in solidarity with the students across the district who have been targeted with racism, antisemitism, homophobia, and other acts of violence and threat. We stand ready to support their safety and their success, and we share your disgust and the recent activity that has occurred at high schools across the 4J district. And it's in that very spirit that I want to thank the board and staff for entrusting Twin Rivers with our community's most precious asset, our students. We're joined in this work together as an imperative, as a calling, and as a commitment to our community and our collective future. We're all in this forever business together, and we're extremely grateful for the 4J district's support of the Twin Rivers Charter School and the commitment you've shown to providing educational options for students and their families. It's an incredibly important asset for these community stakeholders because Twin Rivers is a pathway for students who don't find success at our comprehensive high schools. It's our way of fulfilling a promise that we're making to the future. And now we're five and a half years into this journey. Board members and staff who know us well will surely agree that we've grown, evolved, and improved our school every single day since being originally awarded the charter. And we will also surely agree that Twin Rivers is a continuous work in progress, and we dedicate ourselves to bringing excellence in areas of challenge and opportunity. In the words of our principal, Dr. Jay Breslow, "We are building a school that is worthy of the students who come here, and we are continuing to refine our methods to exceed academic standards, to enhance our school culture, and to expand our CTE partnerships so that our students can be the authors of their own masterpiece." And it's working. Despite the challenges presented from learning through a pandemic, today we have 48 students, a remarkable faculty, and family members who are collectively building a community and a culture that will help our students be successful in whatever the future asks of them. And finally, I would like the record to reflect that Northwest Youth Corps remains committed to providing any and all financial support required to help the Twin Rivers Charter School thrive when school district dollars don't stretch as far as we would like them to. We thank you for your continued support and also to let you know that Dr. Breslow and I will be present for the portion of the meeting related to the renewal to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. So is Christie in the audience?
She is coming in as a speaker now.
Great. So this is Christie Cho- Cat Radley. Christie Cho- Cat Radley. Welcome. She's muted.
I got it. Start video.
Now.
Hi.
You are. Good.
Sorry.
No, thank you. I'm glad you made it. So you have three minutes.
Okay. So my name is Christie, and I'm a parent of a kiddo in 4J and three other kiddos that graduated through Sheldon a decade ago. I'm speaking tonight to address the recent racially motivated violence towards Black students at North and South High School. My understanding is that some students posted photos of Black students on an Instagram page in order to target them for violence or harassment and that there was a threat level that some students for at a Black Student Union rally at North High. And my main concerns are these, that students were targeted, that were targeted, were left unprotected. These incidents occurred a full week prior to our receiving a form letter on Sunday, essentially, in my email about the district's policy on racial violence. It's kind of nebulous. We didn't know where it was coming from, and parents started talking on the boards on Facebook. And I think it's a little more disturbing once you talk to parents directly about things that someone heard or may have happened because there's a lot of assumptions that go on, and then we get more upset. As a parent, I was really upset that the parents of these students could be left in the dark about their children's pictures on the Instagram page or hit list of some kind. It made me felt like my student wasn't in a good place to be protected, and it made me feel like like those students should have been better protected. My second concern is that we haven't taken a strong enough stance against racially motivated violence in our district. I think, well, I'm a parent of a mixed child, and I think a lot of times strictly white areas, and Oregon is one of those, kind of tiptoe around the word racism or racist violence. I don't think that helps. I think calling it out when it happens, yelling the policies from the rooftops, and everyone knowing what the consequence will be should they cross that line is the biggest thing. And transparency is our friend. And keeping everyone in the dark about all this going on, the parents and other of kids in other schools being in the dark, that doesn't help at all. And that is not the way forward in this district. being in the dark, that doesn't help at all. And that is not the way forward in this district.
Thank you, Kristi. Thank you for your comments. We feel it. Yeah. Is Dani? I don't have a last name for Dani.
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everyone. This is Dani. I was born in Argentina. I had an amazing childhood and from my teens on, I watched corruption put my country on its knees. I moved to the US 10 years ago and I'm now watching the same signs happen here. So I'm standing up because I have a duty to sound the alarm as loud as I can. I pulled data from the OHA reports for state and here are some key numbers. The survival rate of COVID is 99.97%. 89% of all deaths were people over 60 years old who also had existing conditions. Five people ages 0 to 19, five people ages 0 to 19 have been reported as COVID deaths. I looked into it. It took me a lot of hours, but all of them had persisting conditions. So most likely, they didn't die from COVID. The few children who do get COVID have recovered just fine. I also want to share other news that I think are important and you probably are not getting them in the corporate media. There was a warning published in the American Heart Association Journal concluding that COVID vaccines, quote, "dramatically increase inflammation on the endothelium and T-cell infiltration of cardiac muscle and may account for the observations of increased thrombosis, cardiomyopathy, and other vascular events following vaccination." A publication in the Lancet states, "High COVID-19 vaccination rates were expected to reduce transmission. However, attack rates among household contacts exposed to fully vaccinated was similar to household contacts exposed to unvaccinated. Big viral load did not differ by vaccination status or variant type. It appears to be grossly negligent to ignore the vaccinated population as a possible and relevant source of transmission." Good news, PCR tests that, I've done a lot of research, they're inaccurate. Finally, the CDC is retiring them, or they're trying anyway, to have other tests that would show the difference between COVID and influenza viruses. And also, according to the CDC, and yesterday I was in the Lain County Commissioner meetings and the incident team confirmed that most of the reported US Omicron cases have hit the fully vaccinated population. States are living normally and the numbers are doing awesome. Why does Oregon keep getting stricter? I feel and I see that the push for the vaccines is a large drug deal and pharmas getting richer and healthcare, education workers are just losing their jobs. Remember that this started with a promise of 94%, but people that get vaccinated still contract, spread the virus, they still get hospitalized and still die. And so also we have athletes falling on the ground, you know, so I ask you, please, let the children live life. They have no reason to fear this virus. Please look under the hood and I hope that you'll listen to us. I don't want to be here, you know. I don't want to spend all this time in research. So I'm just hoping that you'll listen to us. Please look under the hood. And I'm open to show you everything I got if you want to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dani.
Yeah.
It sounds like Katie Kennedy is here now. So let's welcome her.
Hi, I'm sorry my lighting is so poor.
There you are. We can sort of see you in there now.
Okay. I just had a couple comments to make in regards to testing for students. I do test a number of people in the community weekly at different locations and I am wondering why, you know, the schools haven't implemented a more, I mean, they call it a rapid test, but it seems like, I think there, there's a lot of partnering with the university to get those tests mass tested, but still is taking like a day, two, or three to get results from. And I've just received a lot of feedback from different students in regards to the time that it takes, you know, away from their learning of why there isn't an act, like a real rapid test program or availability implemented that would keep the students in school and not, you know, have to miss so much of the, of the learning. I don't know if any, I mean, if anybody has an actual answer to that, but I mean, I know, I'm a source and I know a number of sources here locally that have those tests that could be available to families to, you know, take home. And there you go, your test is done in 15 minutes or less and you have a result. I'm state certified, so I report all of the tests that I give to the Oregon Health Authority. And, you know, even when somebody calls me and, you know, they need to go to a school function or a game or a concert, you know, that I can have their test results to them within a matter of minutes and and they're not missing a beat in life. And so I'm just wondering why, you know, the students aren't being provided some type of quicker option in regards to testing. I mean, ideally, you know, we would like everybody to, well, I would think it would be a good idea for everyone to be vaccinated, but that's just my personal opinion. But for those that, you know, feel differently, there are just quicker options. And I'm just thinking, what a better idea it would be for the, the school district to have those, you know, options available for students so they're not missing out on curriculum and activities.
Thank you, Katie, for your time. We do consider. So we have Susan Lamza.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, Susan.
Hi. My name's Susan Lamza. I'm a retired, well, trying to be a retired special educator. I'm concerned, I'm, my comments are in response to the recent events. And I think Mrs. Van De Car has kind of addressed some of those, but I'll present anyway. You know, my kids were in school 25 years ago when the first racism free zones were declared and they were very proud of that, but we live in different times in a different world and there's an alarming rise in racial incidents in our schools. And I appreciate the mitigation steps taken by OSBE with programs like Every Student Belongs and the BLM Resolution and all the painstaking work that the district has done to work on the policies. But I feel like the policies require a lot of teachers. Teachers are, need to report any and all incidents to their school administrator and meet with parents and students if they can. And then there's a 10-day response time for the administrator to get resolution. And if that doesn't happen, then it goes to the superintendent and there's another 10 days to respond. And I just feel like our teachers and administrators cannot possibly keep up with this, this policy. I think in crisis times, we need a crisis response level. And so I'm advocating for a policy that has immediacy, more T, some FTE and some money that still provides the training for staff, that supports the victims, that educates the perpetrators, ease in reporting, and designated people to follow up and track incidents. So I propose that there be a hate and bias response team, you know, not more SROs and more cops in schools, which costs a lot of money too, but a trained effective cadre of professionals at all levels, K through 5, middle school, high school, that could expand and adapt to our needs over time. And it would alleviate the burden of our already overburdened staff that are just barely hanging on. And I think that, yes, it's costly, absolutely, but so is the cost of, you know, what is the cost of the harm of racial violence in our schools and on our staff. I'm amazed at all the work that you all do and so grateful for you all. But I feel like we need a crisis-level response for the crisis we're in. And it sounds like maybe we're on the road to that, so I hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you for your comments. So I think we have one last speaker, but he's not present. And Angelina didn't show up either. Carrie, she's not in the audience?
That is correct. She does not want to speak and the final speaker on the list is not present.
Great. Well then, we are done with our public comment and I want to welcome Alicia Hayes who joined us. Now we have everyone on the board present. And I'm going to move along to hearing from employee groups. And the first one up is EEA. And EEA is going to have a trio speaking to us and we've, you know, we're definitely going to give them a little more time tonight to give their testimony. Thank you. Sabrina, you're going to introduce folks?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Judy, and thanks for a little bit more time. We won't need a lot. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Van De Car. My name is Sabrina Gordon and I am President of Eugene Education Association. I am joined this evening by EEA Vice President Imelda Cortez and EEA Racial Equity Director Jessie Scott. We are here tonight to say publicly and unequivocally that the members of EEA, the licensed educators in 4J and Bethel, stand with our black students and colleagues and our Jewish students and colleagues who have been targeted in recent incidents of harassment and threats. Hateful acts such as these must not be tolerated in our schools and the people who are targeted must not be left to feel alone.
To our students of color, we would like for you to know that we see your frustrations, your anger, and your pain. We recognize that these experiences are not new and we acknowledge that we all must do better as a community. We also see and honor your strength, your beauty, and your courage as you navigate this world. As educators in this community, we will commit to working collectively with our fellow colleagues in ways that support you daily while also working to dismantle the systems of white supremacy that cause harm within our district. We recognize that to be an ally requires more than simply stating that you are one. To be an ally requires actively working to engage our students and colleagues in difficult and courageous conversations around racism. It requires acknowledging our own implicit biases and fragility and facing them head-on. We must not shy away from these conversations simply because we're feeling uncomfortable. Instead, we must lean into the uncomfortable. However, simply engaging in these conversations and self-reflection is not enough. As educators, we must answer this call to action by challenging the status quo and pushing for meaningful changes within our classrooms, schools, and community. It is our duty to support our students of color by blatantly calling out racism and microaggressions and naming them for what they are.
Today, we were heartened to see so many educators and community members join together this afternoon for rallies near North Eugene and South Eugene High Schools, more than 100 at each site. We did this in order to support each other and our students, especially our BIPOC and Jewish students and colleagues. We wanted together to send a clear message to our community. We do not accept hateful language or actions and the harm they cause. Will 4J act or continue to react? When we don't act to engage in conversations about who we are and all our identities, our differences, our similarities, whether with regards to race and skin color, sexual orientation and gender amongst many others, then we end up reacting to intolerance, to racist incidents, and to harm being done within our community, especially our students and staff of color. When we don't act to practice sincere care for our students, make genuine connections, and be responsive to their needs, then we need to react to their behaviors that communicate a need and we react to their cries for help. When we don't act to support our staff at schools, especially our staff of color during an incredibly unusual and difficult time, then we break. We are right now breaking. What is the reaction to that? How does 4J change this pattern? By taking meaningful action, by listening and truly hearing our students and staff of color, by being bold and leading, not by reacting and trying to just move on. EEA, including our BIPOC members, look forward to partnering with 4J to identify and take action to better support our students and educators, especially our black and Jewish community. We want to thrive. We believe that if we work together, we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina and Jessie and Imelda for your time. And now we have MAPS and I think they're going to be a duo tonight, right? So thank you. We have Peter Trauma and Trevor White.
Thank you. Good evening, board and Superintendent Van De Car. I'm Peter Trauma, President of MAPS. And tonight I have the pleasure of introducing Trevor White, who is our district's Custodial Services Manager. Trevor is a treasure in 4J. Years ago, as our lead custodian at North Eugene, Trevor volunteered to coordinate the ASB, which is the student council at high school. This exemplifies how he consistently looks for novel ways to contribute to our district. And now Trevor White.
Thank you, Peter. Way too kind. Good evening Superintendent Van De Car, members of the board. As Peter said, my name's Trevor White, the Custodial Services Manager, parent of two Howard Road Runners, MAPS Board Secretary and representative for the Facilities, Warehouse, and Transportation Departments. Don't have the eloquence of Peter or Tom Horn, but do want to take just a minute and explain who we, the MAPS members, are in these departments and briefly how we support the operation of the district. So, starting with the warehouse supervisor who works supporting and overseeing the work of the warehouse operations and classified warehouse employees, ensuring food deliveries and instructional materials are routed appropriately and delivered on time. Our transportation MAP members include one professional, the Business Info System Analyst, who develops, maintains, and integrates transportation-specific programs with district-wide and statewide systems and databases. Our two transportation supervisors who work directly with well over 100 classified employees to ensure the safe delivery of students to and from schools daily. At facilities, we have three Ms, three Ss, and a number of Ps. Starting with the Fund 400 team, we have the Capital Improvement Program Manager, who oversees the capital improvement program and bond planning while supporting the work of a number of construction project managers. These construction project managers work with both large projects such as new schools' constructions as well as managing a whole host of other capital renovations and improvements to our facilities. Downstairs, we have the Fund 100 team led by the Facilities and Maintenance Manager, who is responsible for ensuring the timely upkeep and maintenance, thereby the safe operation of all of our approximately 40 work sites, as well as overseeing our Fund 100 facility improvement projects. He does so by and while overseeing the following, the Mechanical Division Supervisor, who oversees the electricians, the plumbers, the HVAC workers, the locksmiths, and is our point person for after-hour alarm calls. Our Buildings and Ground Supervisor, who oversees the carpentry, roofing, floor covering, painting, preventative maintenance, and groundskeeping. The Custodial Manager, who along with the Custodial Supervisor oversees the daily cleaning and disinfection as well as the annual restorative projects at our school site, supporting the work of approximately 90 custodians. The Architectural and Engineering Office, which includes the Fund 100 professionals, including the Project Manager for the larger Fund 100 improvement projects, the architect and engineer. Lastly, but certainly not least, we have an executive assistant. And while their main focus is supporting department leadership, they're always ready and willing to assist the MAPS members in various projects that we might have. Important to note that we MAPS members are able to do what we do with the direction provided by our department leadership and most importantly, the hard work, expertise, and dedication of the close to 250 classified employees we have the pleasure of supporting. So thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief introduction of who we, the MAPS members, from transportation, warehouse, and facilities management are. And I'd like to thank you for the time and your service to Eugene School District 4J. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. That was, I learned a lot. That was informative. Okay, we don't have OSEA signed up to speak. And that was the last word anyhow. I just want to be sure they're not in the audience. Then let's move to board comments. And who would like to begin? Maya.
Thank you to the folks who came to give testimony tonight regarding middle school track, as well as the dozens and dozens of folks who sent in emails. In particular, I appreciate the voices of our students advocating for the many reasons participating in track and field can contribute to physical and mental wellness while also thoughtfully framing the possible cancellation as an equity issue. The past two weeks have been filled with tremendous amounts of harm. There are no words that can undo this harm, but that cannot excuse us from speaking up. Thank you to all the folks who have been clamoring for action and thank you to EEA for organizing people to gather in demonstration today. The presence of so many people showing their resistance to racist harm was truly moving to both participate in and to witness. I stand in solidarity with our black students and their families, with our staff and with our community, all who have been harmed. I cannot emphasize enough my position that our district holds no space for racially targeted harassment and downright terrorizing of our black community. I also must emphasize that while the current I also must emphasize that while the current events are at the forefront of many of our minds, this type of assault is not new and has a long historical precedence. As a school district, we must act to deter its continuation. As a school district, we know that we hold the responsibility of education in our hands and we must use this moment as a catalyst to learn. For these recent events, which are but the outer layer of the onion, if you will, are only our most recent signals that we have great room for learning. We must continue to educate ourselves on how to better protect our Black, Indigenous and students of color. We must also continue to educate ourselves on how to best support those who are harmed, including educating ourselves on the value of affinity groups and the tremendous support they offer our students. We must continue to educate ourselves on the power of open, clear and swift communication. We must also continue to educate ourselves on recognizing the deficits of current policies and the need for new policies and the corollary practices that will better serve our students and our staff, our community. And only then will we be able to authentically take on the most important lesson, which is the education of our students and staff in the values that create fertile ground for communicating to our youth that they do indeed belong, that they are indeed valued and that we are indeed a district built of many communities, all of whom deserve to feel multiple modes of safety and relevance. We must teach our youth and our staff to transgress the constraints of the lessons rooted in white supremacy culture they have learned that tell them otherwise. We must do this so we are not caught in endless cycle of harmful behavior, a cycle in which we are currently self-perpetuating by not digging into all the learning we so clearly need to take on. In this vein, tonight I will be asking our board to agree to add an item for future action at an upcoming board meeting, a policy specific to racial harassment. For some time now, I alongside community members and other board members have been pushing for this. A particular note in this process is the work of community members Mika Contreras and Michelle Shu of Calc's Education Justice Action Team. Following a meeting this past week, which Superintendent Vanderkar mentioned with Mika and Michelle, district leadership has articulated support for a racial harassment policy and has committed to crafting this policy in collaboration with these community partners with our next meeting scheduled for January 5th. I'm confident we will craft this necessary policy to be multi-pronged and rooted in best practices as identified and developed by Black and Brown practitioners, including the creation of a response team and a restructured system for reporting. I am confident we will craft a policy that will hold the potential to be effective, but it is noteworthy that this policy's impending effectiveness will lie in the learning I just outlined. And the key to this learning is the taking in of knowledge, wisdom and insight with an openness that is unfettered by defensiveness or shame. I know we can do this and the time is now. Before I close tonight, I want to take a moment to honor the thirty years that Brenda and Joe Brainard have devoted to leading our natives program in partnership with 4J. This past Tuesday night, so last night, marked the last natives' parent group meeting led by the Brainards. Over the past three decades, the Brainards cultivated a safe space for our native students to learn about their culture, to gather in community, to receive academic support and so much more. The contributions of the Brainards and the native program are impossible to count. The gratitude I have for their dedication is impossible to measure, but it doesn't mean I can't start with a simple yet deeply felt and genuine thank you. Thank you Brenda and Joe. Now upon your official retirement, it is up to us to ensure your legacy be respectfully carried forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Who else would like to go? Who'd like to go next? Laurel.
I just have a few words to say and mostly in response to what we heard tonight and what we've been hearing this past few weeks. I do, I really appreciated the student voice and I encourage students to continue using that voice by reaching out to the board. That's helpful and it doesn't happen enough and we need, we want to hear from you. Absolutely. I do, I also absolutely appreciate the connection of equity to, and how, I'm sorry, I can't remember the gentleman who, name who spoke, but the way he connected equity to the lack of being able to have track and field in middle school was profound because it's so true. It is a classic example of how passive inequity works in the sense that it happens, nobody says a whole lot, but there's a whole bunch of people that miss out and it's unfortunate. The other thing I'd like to point out is I, our district COVID policy follows the state's mandate. I want parents, students and staff to understand that I absolutely support our COVID restrictions and what we're doing. The majority of people who speak on the board only mention our students who are important. And if our buildings only had students in them, that might make sense. But we also have a lot of staff and and that staff and those students go home and many times interact with relatives or activity leaders that are over to the age of sixty. It is important that we continue to follow the state guidelines. Not that I thought that there was any chance we were not going to because I know we have to. But I just wanted to say that because we continue to hear this over and over and there's real logic behind the choices and the policies we have. And I guess you can't count how many people that don't die. It sounds a horrible way to say it, but you can't, you don't know how many people you're saving. So you just got to save them. I will, the last thing I'll say, I'm equally frustrated about how little support there is in our schools to support racial equity. I know there's work that happens, but the reality is it's, there's just no foundation of equity in our schools. It's I should read what I wrote. I'll go off on a tangent. I have felt the frustration and have spoken frequently on how district equity work has been a performance with no really real substance behind it. Please know this is not only two weeks of harm. This is a harm that happens every day, but the difference is that there's proof. And because we as Black citizens know that our word is never acted on alone. We have to have proof, so rarely do we come forward. I'm excited that we are looking at some really robust equity policy to add in our board work and that's coming. And we're looking at it, Maya just mentioned it. This board is moving forward with the discussion and it's important. And I'm hoping that leads to embedding equity into our schools for our marginalized and protected classes and our student body. And to and to understand how important it is to, to, yes, we don't want to do a knee jerk reaction, but to wait too long also shows that we're just being careful and we're not, we're doing exactly the most careful thing instead of, I loved your letter Sydney, but I wish it had come sooner because it was needed sooner. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Maya. Thank you Laurel. So, who else wants to speak? Martina.
Oh, well, you know, there's a lot to say after the kind of few weeks, like the kind that we've had. And a lot of what I could say has been addressed better than I could say it by my peers, by the superintendent, by our educators and by so many of the folks who offered public comment both live today and also in email. And then of course, all of this is against the backdrop of today having lost Bell Hooks. An academic and author and activist who was for so many people, myself included, a guiding light. And so I just feel like she can speak better than I ever could. And so I just wanted to share what I've been thinking about today. She says, amongst many other things, one of the most vital ways we sustain ourselves is by building communities of resistance, places where we know we are not alone. We need to keep working harder to ensure that all of our students know that they're not alone. And I really look forward to the ways that we're going to continue to improve our response to and our prevention of the kinds of racist, anti-Semitic and white supremacist violence that this last week has demonstrated, but that is happening all the time. I'm really encouraged by what I'm hearing about this forthcoming racial harassment policy, which I know will be a much needed and useful tool in the district's collective toolkit. And I also know that that is just one of the very many things that we are going to need to do and continue to do better about. And so I'm appreciative of everyone who is doing that work and I'm really, I feel fortunate that I get to be part of a community, including my peers on the board who are working so hard to make sure that our students aren't alone.
Thank you. It was a sad day today, yes, to lose such a great author and role model. Who else? We have Gordon, Alicia and Mary yet to speak. Alicia.
Thanks Judy and thanks for letting me be tardy today. It was my son's birthday and with the time zone and his work, five thirty, your time was the only time I could connect with him. So I apologize for being late, but it was absolutely worth it. And I'm sorry that I wasn't there today to join with everyone else because Martina, you nailed it with Bell's words about community. So I appreciate all the conversations I've had with folks and just what you've all talked about today. Always great to go last and let the people that are much more articulate than I have those words. In terms of committees and work, board work, I've had one meeting this week. Well, it was last week that we'll report on later, the small group looking at student voice. Have a chance with the three of us to report on that later. Thank you so much.
Thanks Alicia. Mary or Gordon?
I'm happy to go Judy.
Great.
So I want to touch on, you know, some of the same topics as other people. On middle school track, I'm glad to know that the superintendent is working on the problem. I thought that Ella Donahue's statement about soliciting parent volunteering in different locations is a good idea, given the outpouring of support we've gotten from that. It seems like we should be able to get parent volunteers as we need. And I also think that especially in this year coming out of COVID, the need for physical activities like sports, for teamwork, for all the other things you get from athletics, both as a physical and mental health issue is critical. And so I know that there have been some things that need to work out. I'd like to ask the superintendent to report back to us at our next board meeting in January to hear what kind of progress we've been able to make over the holiday break towards solving this problem. On the need for anti-racist and anti-racist harassment threats policy, we all obviously believe that there should be no place for this in our community, but we also know that there is place, that there has been place, not because anybody wants there to be. And we know that the incidents that have happened now is just a few of the, there are many more incidents than that come to our notice. I think it makes sense, as I hear from other people, to do this in a way that builds on a restorative justice model. And I know that OSEA is one of the organizations that has been leading the way on this. We're going to be voting in the in the consent agenda on approving a program that OSEA started with money gotten nationally to work on restorative justice within the district. I know that there are people in that union and board colleagues and other people in the district who know this better than me and I'm happy to follow their lead in figuring this out. But the one thing I do know is that to do this seriously is going to take money, time and staff. And that means that something else won't get done. I don't know what it is, but I don't want to make statements or proclamations without a serious policy that has teeth to it. And I know that that can't be done by saying we're going to do it on the side of everything else that everybody else is doing. So I'm grateful for the people who are working on this. I look forward to seeing a proposal on it and I hope that we can have something in place by the end of the current term. The last thing I want to touch on is the situation with the Camus Ridge rebuild. Again, I appreciate all the hard work done by district staff, especially by the facility staff who's been working hard for a year, for more than a year with a lot of talent and in good faith. In the last couple of weeks, we've gotten a lot of emails from parents, staff and community members all saying the same thing. And I think this reflects not a problem with Facilities Department, but a problem in communication. Some of this is mistakes that happened at the start of it, providing one level of community input and choice at Edison and a different level and different and lower level of Camus and other schools. And some of it's a style of communication along the way in community meetings, community members not being shown a picture of what the school is supposed to look like till very late in the process, still now not having seen drawings of what it looks like inside, being told that some changes which seemed common sense, like first floor classrooms having doors to the outside as they do now are impossible for reasons that seem just not credible. Being told that we couldn't do it because it would be unfair to teachers on the second floor since they couldn't have doors. Being told that the switch from wall to wall windows in the current building to very few and very narrow windows in the proposed structure is required according to a teacher survey done years ago, which neither the community nor I as a board member have yet been able to see. And that therefore all 4J schools have to be built with these few windows when anyone can walk a mile down the road and see Edison covered in large windows, much like the current Camus is. And finally, that after the consultants asked for public comment and received sixty comments asking for changes, then sending parents a survey that gives only three choices, none of which were what was asked for, all of which are more or less the same and with no space to give any other response, I think is just disingenuous and is a shame. And I think that it follows a style of communication that we've too often follow into, which I think ends up feeling manipulative and breeding cynicism and resentment and possibly weakening support for our next bond issue. We're now close to the point where this project needs to be put out to contract and the work begun. And I know that everyone in the district feels that urgency. Every parent or teacher I've heard from understands that it's too late to make a lot of changes and also understands that we're limited in what we can do by the budget and timeline we need to stick to. I believe what's needed now is a final meeting between representatives of parents and school staff to sit down with whoever are the right people from the districts and have a completely transparent conversation. Here's how much money we have. Here's where we may have some wiggle room. Here's things we can't do because it's too late or because it would cost too much. And here are places we don't have any choice. I think and hope that there are some affordable improvements that can be made. But more than that, I think it's critical that we take communications into a new, into a new a new type of communications, that we take a new step to reestablish trust and openness and straightforwardness with the community and not try to massage that process. Thank you.
Mary.
Thank you. I also am very dismayed and upset that students have been bullied and harassed. And it's happening in our school district. It's very disheartening, as I said. I do want to thank the staff for their rapid response. This is a crime and so you just can't necessarily wade in and make pronouncements. I think the other thing that is really important to me is accountability, that who's ever responsible for this will be held accountable because that's our job is to enforce policy and hold people accountable. And as such, I want the board here and the listening public to know that I have filed a complaint with the district regarding the behavior of several board members with regard to their treatment of staff. So more forthcoming on that. In terms of my committee assignments, I attended an OSBA webinar yesterday talking about effective and ineffective boards and relationships with superintendents. Effective boards, characteristics, shared values and belief that all students can learn. We have that. Unified governance, data monitoring, community engagement, conditions for success, board bonding and bridging. And I say that's where we need some work. Ineffective boards, micromanagement, personal agendas, disorderly meetings, refer to external pressure, less reliance on the superintendent and interpersonal conflict. So those are things I think we can all work on. As I reflected on what I wanted to talk about, I decided I needed to go back and read some books. So I found a book that I read a couple of years ago and I think the words are particularly helpful right now. All I really just needed to know, to learn, I learned in kindergarten. Wisdom was not at the top of the graduate school mountain, but there in the sand pile Sunday school. Those are the things I learned. Share everything, play fair, don't hit people, put things back where you find them, clean up your own mess, don't take things that aren't yours, say you're sorry when you hurt somebody, wash your hands before you eat, flush, warm cookies and cold milk. Wash your hands before you eat. Flush. Warm cookies and cold milk are good for you. Live a balanced life, do some and think some and draw paint and sing and dance every day to change your work habits. Take a nap every afternoon. When you go out into the world, watch for traffic, hold hands and stick together. Be aware of wonder. Remember the little seed in the styrofoam cup? The roots go down into the plant and grows up and nobody really knows how or why, but we're all like that. Goldfish and hamsters and white mice and even little seeds in styrofoam cups. They all die. So do we. And then remember the Dick and Jane books and the first word you learn, the biggest word of all, look. Everything you know, need to know is somewhere there. The golden rule and love and basic sanitation. Ecology and politics, equality and sane living. Take any of those items and extrapolate into sophisticated belt terms and apply it to your family, your life, your work, government or your world and it holds true, even clear and firm. Think of what a better world it would be if we all, the whole world had cookies and milk about three o'clock every afternoon and then lay down on our blankies for a nap. Or if all the governments had a basic policy to always put things back where they found them and to clean up their own mess. And it is still true, no matter how old you are, when you go out into the world, the best way together is stick together and hold hands. The other topic I want to talk about tonight, and I've talked about this before and will continue to talk about it, is climate change. There was an article yesterday in the Washington Post and I'm going to read from that. This is, and it also relates to a scientist from Oregon State. The ice shelf was cracking up. Survey showed warm ocean currents eroding the underbelly. Satellite imaging reviewed, revealed long parallel fissures in this frozen expanse like scratches from some cloud monster. One fraction grew so bad, so fast, scientists called it the dagger. It was usually surprising to see things changing so fast, said the Oregon State geologist who was chosen for that spot. The others parts of the infamous glacier crumbled. This wedge of floating ice acted as a bridge, slowing it melting, slowing the melt. It was supposed to be boring, safe and durable. Now climate change has turned that ice shelf into a threat. Planet warming pollution from burning fossil fuels and other human activities has already raised global temperatures more than 1.1 degrees Celsius. But the effects are particularly profound at the poles when rising temperatures have seriously undermined the ice that used to be there. In many Native American lasting communities, climate impacts compounded the hardships of the coronavirus leading to food shortages among people who have lived off the land for thousands of years. The other thing I want to mention too, on the same topic, is that now with the Build Better Act and the infrastructure bill, there is $5 billion, $5 billion in federal money coming down the pipe for electric school buses. And I hope once again, we will talk about this at board. This is the third or fourth time I've mentioned it and I will bring it up again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our board comments. And we'll move on to the consent agenda items. There are four items on tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Thank you. Martina has moved and Alicia has seconded the that we vote on the four items in the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
All right, don't we get discussion if there is?
Oh, thank you. Well, no, not consent. Do we discuss the consent agenda? I guess we do. That's right. Okay, yes.
Yes, there's a motion on the table. It's debatable.
We can debate it. Yes. Thank you Gordon. Looks like you have your hand up.
I did. Thank you. And I consent to everything, but I just wanted to to mention again, the second item here, the approve American Federation of Teachers Educational Foundation grant. This is something that people within OSEA on their own initiative went to a national organization and got a big chunk of money to start a program on restorative justice within our district that cost the district nothing. They've put in countless free hours in addition to the money. And I just wanted to make sure that people knew what this was and how lucky you are to have had that initiative. Thanks.
Thanks Gordon. Thanks for acknowledging that. Superintendent.
What Gordon said is true and I do appreciate all the work that the OSEA members put into it. We're asking if we can match the grant. So I want to make sure you all know what you're consenting to. So we're asking that we can use our budget 50,000 to match their $50,000 grant. That's, that's the ask tonight.
Great. Thank you. Next time we should probably put that on an item for action so we could discuss it, but it sounds great. So any other conversation about the consent agenda items? Then I will ask for a vote. All those in favor of passing the four items in the consent agenda, say aye and raise your hand. Looks like it's unanimous. Six votes yes for the consent agenda passes unanimously. So next.
You mean seven?
Pardon me?
You mean seven.
Yes, unanimously. Seven yes. So items for information, the first item is discuss including student voice and future board meetings. We had this on the agenda last time and we had a subcommittee of Alicia Hayes, Maya Rabasa and Laurel O'Rourke that took this and is bringing forward another tweaked proposal. So I don't know who's presenting. Alicia, you have your mic off. Probably you.
I do. And I couldn't figure out how to get somebody else to do it. Well, no, they figured out how to give it to me. So yes, Maya and Laurel and I had a chance to meet and she can see by the information that we've put forward, it is similar to what was put forward before with a slight tweak. And, and so what our proposal is, is that we move forward and seat those members that, those five high school students that were decided on, voted on, however, they made that cut to sit on the board, with the board. We did not talk about specifics about where they would sit. We know that is a logistical issue that Lisa and maybe leadership will have to deal with. Obviously, as we're meeting virtual, it's not an issue. We did decide that that first meeting in January was going to be a board training for those students that we wanted to. Well, I will just stop and say, as I've been on the board, I have watched us do better and better and better at including student voice. And we talk about authentic student voice and we have had authentic student voice on the board. And then we've had some people that whatever the reason, it's not exactly the voice or we haven't given the space or the training that we're hoping we, we just continue to do better as we move forward. So I know I've heard from board members that sometimes we use authentic voice. You kind of suggested that you haven't had it, but we can always do better. And so to that end, we took on the issue of seating those students and how we were going to do that. In the first round, we planned to meet as a small group to talk more about affinity groups and how and how we can best hear those voices. And we started a good conversation, I think. And waiting really helps us get those voices because they should be part of those discussions. And as we haven't got all the affinity groups set, we were concerned that we would once again be setting the table and inviting them to a seat at the table versus helping them decide whether we even want to sit at a table. So there is that part. In terms of the training or the onboarding, we are going to ask Laurel and Maya and Martina to come together to, to work on that onboarding slash training. I know that Laurel and Maya were part of that. Martina, hope it's okay with you. And you can let us know if it's not that, that you be part of that. We have set a meeting for that and obviously Martina, we haven't talked to you about it, but we did set a meeting for January 7th at 5:30, I believe. And I'm looking at Laurel and Maya. I think I am correct on that. I want to open it up to either Laurel or Maya to see if they have anything else to add. Laurel, do you want to go first? Maya, do you want to go first? Maya's got her hand up. So I think she'll go first.
I, I think you did a fabulous job, Alicia. Martina, I do want to add a little cushion for you in the, in the sudden news that you just received. And while it would be absolutely wonderful for that to be the configuration of the folks leading that training. If it doesn't work for you, the timing is really important to get the students on. So I think that Laurel and I could handle it, but we thoroughly and with open arms welcome you. So it's more of a request. Since we know your passion and we know your skillset and we would welcome it. But I just want to, want to just cushion that a little because I saw your face reacting. So you and I, and I think that Alicia, in the same vein, if it doesn't work with your schedule and whatnot, like this is something that, that that will still be able to be done and done well.
Laurel, do you have anything to add?
I, I don't know if there's a lot to add. I just, just to reiterate that really we've completely broken this apart and we're really saying right now the students that are already been chosen to come do this talk is going to be separate from the work. And a different decision and we're going to be working on that, to continue working on that with, you know, with bringing it to the board, however you say that appropriately. So, and yeah, you said it really well, Alicia. Thank you.
So I, Martina had her hand up before Mary. So yeah.
Okay, can I just add, Martina, the reason we didn't call is there were three of us. You would have been a fourth that would have been inappropriate. So that's why we sprung it on you in public because we do our business in public.
Totally fair. I'm very honored to have that particular task be sprung on me. My faces are mostly because I'm really worried that I might be the person who holds things up because my schedule is so complicated. So I appreciate the generosity in, in knowing that, you know, it may just be my schedule, but I do think I'm available on Friday the 7th at 5:30 conveniently. So I can make it happen at least, at least this time. At my office, we call that being voluntold to do something. And I'm very honored. So thank you.
Mary.
Will we still be assigned students like in a mentorship relationship and will that include the affinity groups or just the high school representatives? Mary, Maya, you want to go?
Mary, yeah. What Alicia was laying out is that this plan is strictly for the representatives from the high school who have been chosen by their high schools. So it's the, it's, I think we maybe even refer to them as the traditional, whether that's the right word or not, but it's the one, it's the, it's the students that you're probably familiar with sitting alongside you. And we wanted to take time to, to decide how to bring in the affinity groups so that we could involve those students and also so that we could give time to the schools to make sure that they are all in place. So that's, that's coming later. This is just strictly for the student reps. Also, I think it's important to note that there's only five student reps and there's seven of us. So in terms of assigning them, that's going to, that's going to be something that we either need to talk about tonight or we need to maybe for those of us that are newer and there's already a method in place that we can learn about.
Can I respond for what it's worth? We actually get someone from IHS as well as the other five high schools. So there are actually six student representatives. And then in the past, the board chair, because of the workload, has been exempt from having a student assigned to them. So it all works out. That was what we did before for the last couple of years.
So I know this is on the fly, but perhaps Martina, Laurel and I, when we are doing our planning of the orientation, we can also do a little matchup at that same meeting.
That sounds like a great plan. And if, if someone doesn't have time, I will miss having a board buddy, but I'll get one next year. So hopefully. Thank you. Any other questions for this committee? Because I think this will be for action do at our next meeting. So go ahead.
Actually, we would just need to get a without, oh boy, I'm losing my train of thought. We actually need to move it forward tonight. And I don't know that we need an actual item for action. We just kind of need head nods that we're good with moving on in the traditional way we have. Because again, our next meeting would be the students' first meeting. And what that means is you cannot have a work session on that first Wednesday in January because it'll be a board orientation for the students unless you want to do something different. I'm just, just putting it out here.
You know.
We could do a lot of things.
Is that without objection? We get head nods?
That's the word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A thumbs up. They're clear to see. So if we're okay with moving forward, just show us a thumbs up. Okay, it looks like we have, we are going to be having a work session with the students in January. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Can I just say, in the past, all board members were invited to attend, but I looked to the small group to decide what is the most effective way. It can kind of be overwhelming if we're all there. Or it could be very important. I looked at that group. I'm just saying, please don't put in a work session because you'll have at least a few of your board members onboarding and students.
From my understanding of our recommendation, the work session time was the training of the students with just, I think that was what Alicia was spelling out, was just Martina, Laurel and myself. That, that's, that's how we had put forward that proposal.
And maybe it would be good towards the end of it, people could come and at least be introduced to their board, the person they've been paired with. So that would be nice. It would be a nice warm introduction rather than at a formal board meeting. So I'm just going to put that suggestion out as you plan. So. Thanks. Okay. Moving along. We're now at items for action. And the first item on our agenda is to consider revisions and updates to the board policies. And we have, I think, our general counsel Christine Nesbitt is available. She presented on this last time. Shall I read all the policies off in the introduction?
Sure, that'd be fine.
We have policy GBNAB/JHFE suspected abuse of a child reporting requirements. JHF E/GBNAB suspected abuse of a child, of a child reporting requirements. GBNAA/JHFF suspected sexual conduct with students and reporting requirements. JHF F/GBNAA suspected sexual conduct with students and reporting requirements. IGBHA alternative education programs and IGDJ interscholastic activities.
Thank you Chair Newman. The, I, I am just here to pass along the superintendent's recommendation that the board moved and approved these policies, policy revisions. They were previously presented at the last meeting and we have not received any public comment on them.
Does someone want to make a motion? Martina.
So just, just a quick clarifying question to make this motion. Do I need to read aloud all of those letters?
No, you, you can, you can just say to, you know, I move that we approve the revisions to the policies identified by Chair Newman.
Great. I did practice saying all those things quickly. And even with years of theater addiction training, cannot say them fast. So instead I will say, I move that the board approve revisions to the board policies as Chair Newman just read aloud.
Do we have a second? Alicia, so we have Martina moving and Alicia seconding. Do we have discussion? I don't see any hands up. So I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion as presented, raise your hand and we don't run mic so great. It looks like seven board members voted yes. So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item for action is to approve the superintendent's search plan and timeline. To approve the superintendent's search plan and timeline. So we just had a work session on this item before our general board meeting. And what we have, it it's been up, it was not in the packet originally because we hadn't really had the chance to discuss it till our work session. I believe it is now uploaded in Board Book. So if anyone in the listening audience wants to take a look at it, it should be up there. And it includes. The process as a general timeline and process for the search for superintendent. And beginning with the that we're going to be posting and advertising the position announcement as of the end of this week. And then we will be doing community forums that we will be, we just approved dates which are also on. On the document in the board packet. I'm not gonna read them all, but they will be posted on the website by the end of this week. A a schedule of events so people can start getting them in their calendars. Then we will start advertising them out in the community, which is why we wanted to. To talk about this today. And some of them will be in person and some of them will be over Zoom. And some of them will be specific groups and some of them and most of them will be open to the general public. So please check those out. And. In addition to the timeline, there is. There's a list of roles and responsibilities for our Alma Advisory Group that we're working with, our consultants. Roles and responsibilities for the board as a whole, which is really doing the bulk of making all the decisions. And then there's a subcommittee of Mary Walston, Maya Robassa and myself that are gonna be working on logistics. And staff roles, we have two staff members, Lisa Fijorbeck and Carrie Delft that are gonna be supporting the process. So that's an overview. And again, it's the details will be posted up in Board Book. Do we have a motion? And then we'll be able to have discussion if we want after that. Martina.
All right. So I think we have two motions that I'll do one at a time. So the first is I move that the board authorize a subcommittee of up to three board members to plan and coordinate details and logistics of the superintendent selection process.
Do we have a second? Okay, Martina has moved and Alicia has seconded the motion. Is there a discussion? Laurel.
Do we know how long the committee is going to has to go until I just I don't know if that has to be defined as part of it? Um, I've just came to my mind that we don't have like. The time limit.
Okay, good question, Laurel. We didn't set a time limit. My assumption and maybe is that. All of the the structure will be in place until we get to the end of our process, which is selecting a superintendent. There might be less logistics involved. You know, they'll only be working as much as needed to set up any logistics behind the scenes. Like making this schedule that we proposed that people could change. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion about the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question then. All those in favor of being able to set up the subcommittee of three members of the board. Raise your hand to vote yay, vote yes. Okay, that's four votes yes. So the motion passes unanimously.
Seven, seven votes yes.
Oh, did I say four?
You did. It's fine.
Sorry, seven. Everyone voted yes.
In that case, then I have a a second. Motion. I move that the board approve the proposed superintendent selection process. As we've just outlined.
We have a second. So Martina's moved and Maya seconded the motion. Any discussion about this motion? Laurel.
I know I have a question in my head. I'm sorry, I'm kinda woolly brain. It was important to give me a second. But it just has to, oh, yes. Is there any part in this where it talks about being able to pivot if there's something happens like I know we have some. Like say, the information goes out and we need people to make decisions quickly or something goes on. Is that in there? Cuz I don't remember seeing that in the in the document I got right before the work session.
I know there's nothing specifically about that. I think a question was raised in the work session by Martina. You know what if? You know, we have quite a few in-person things happening in mid-January. So what if COVID doesn't allow? And we did talk about that we would pivot to virtual. I I guess my assumption is as needed, we would pivot. And I think the roles and responsibilities are articulated enough that we wouldn't pivot without the people who had that responsibility weighing in. So if there's a decision, we would have to consult the whole board to pivot, you know, to.
I guess just. Being able to. Put together some way to make a vote in case we have to decide things so this to happen when we have breaks in between meetings. So.
That's a good question. We have sort of a mechanism. You know, we usually Lisa helps us. We alert people. Well, we would try to give 24 hours notice unless it's an emergency beyond that, but I can't imagine not having 24 hours notice. And I think you get notified as a board member and we would act rapidly.
Okay. So I just want that to be notated somehow in it to to show that we have a plan. Cuz I mean, we have to get this to happen.
Yes. Any other questions or discussion?
So is that going to be added?
What words would so you're wanting to amend the motion? We're we're on record now saying that that's what we would do. This is so I don't know. If you have an amendment you wanna add. You could bring an amendment for.
So we just so the public knows, we've got the the piece of paper with this information. I got it during our work session. So I'm just asking questions to clarify some of the things that I didn't think about during the work session since I didn't get a chance to see it. And so I'm. I was wondering about adding language around emergency needing to, you know, what we do and. And our process around that. And no, I don't have the language for it.
Martina, do you have a suggestion?
I I do. I'm I wonder if perhaps to address that concern, we could. Uh, amend this document to just include a line like, you know. These, you know, this dates and timelines and processes subject to change as needed, something like that with the sort of understanding that this is. This is a, you know, this is an outline of our expectation in this moment. And of course, something could happen. And then in the way that I would understand that, we would already, we already have policies and procedures in place for things like emergency. Board meetings. So I wouldn't think that we would need to like outline those sorts of things specifically cuz it would just be following our regular procedures. But perhaps just that additional sort of like, hey, nobody take this as the, you know, forever letter of law because it's possible that things will change. If it turns out that, you know, the moon explodes on January 18th or something horrible.
Mary.
Now I said that and it's gonna happen. It's terrible.
I wrote that down, but let's see, Mary, you have a comment.
I was just to point out point out that we have weekly meetings, the 19th to 26th and the 2nd of February scheduled already on our calendars. You've asked us all to hold every Wednesday. And so I can't believe there'd be a crisis that we'd have to have an emergency meeting. That we couldn't, you know, wait to take formal action at a meeting.
Alicia.
So I just wanna check back in with Laurel cuz just checked what I heard, which is. We would be putting something in that just says, as Martina said, these are subject to change. Because it's true. We did say we're gonna be in person and now we're gonna be virtual and we want people to know that that is a possibility. Is that what you were getting at, Laura?
I I mean, yes, and that we are living in unprecedented times and that it's really important because what I've seen. Is that, yes, while we I'm glad we have emergency board meeting policy of some sort. I think it's also rare that that gets kicked into happening and we may need to make decisions in the interim. Like a decision from Alma, we need to know this and before a certain time. So. I guess I'm my concern is just that we have this in it because it's. Because we seem to have a lot of things that are just kinda like, oh, we all know that. And we all know that is not accurate. So let's let's have it in there because what if? Okay, I'll say something worse, Martina. What if Omicron? Is is not just a fun name to say and. And it's horrible. And so we and we have to change the whole policy and procedure and we have to make decisions about this on the on the fly and we have to figure this out. I guess it's either a decision to. For emergencies to allow the subcommittee to make emergency decisions or a decision to have. To just put it on what was written out. Some of this is just because I didn't, you know, if we don't get this stuff in advance, you're gonna have to deal with my brain as it thinks of it. Sorry.
I'm sorry, we didn't get it in advance. It was hot off the press. So we'll deal with your thoughts here. That's great. Maya.
I'm I'm wondering, Laurel, if because this is already so hypothetical. I'm sure that this isn't a typical motion, but I'm wondering if the motion could. Include what Martina suggested, which is all of these things are subject to change, followed by. And and may require scheduling emergency meetings, just to have it. On record in the in the in the books and laid out. I don't I don't think that. Allocating the purview of the subcommittee to make decisions is something that I personally would support. So just just like specifically stating that this could require emergency meetings. I think that that I think that that's not. I think that that's pretty wise and and it is ambiguous, but it also we we are living in an ambiguous time. Now we have these things that we need to.
There's no way. There's no way as a member of the work group that I want that responsibility of that decision. I'm I'm agreeing.
Right. So that's why that's why and Laurel, if you're okay with it, I'm happy to make the motion to make to amend the previous motion. Or you can, but I I'm wondering if that language satisfies your concern, both this is subject to change and it may require emergency meetings.
Yes, yes, I do like that. Thank you.
So, um, Martina, did you write that down? What you said? Do you wanna read it to us?
I didn't write it down, but I feel like we can reproduce it right now in this moment. So it sounds to me like we are all kind of in agreement that there could be a friendly amendment to this policy or to this process that would say. All of, you know, all of that, all of what's written here is subject to change as needed. And that we'd like to state that it there is a possibility that emergency board meetings could be called for as required to respond to events.
Okay, I just got a text. It says that we maybe can't say definitely emergency, but how about unexpected?
That's true. Emergency has some specific meanings, right?
Special isn't isn't the correct word, special meeting, right?
Christine, is that will that work? Kristi, special.
That's correct. It's a special meeting. It's definitely not an emergency meeting. It's a special meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, given that I am the maker of the original motion. Can I just say that that's a friendly amendment and that we don't need to to vote on that without objection?
Yes.
Feel like I'm learning Robert's rules.
I know. That's what I believe this is a friendly amendment. I'm looking to make sure no one's. Objecting to that. Okay.
Do I need to second it one more time? Okay, Alicia, Alicia is nodding yes and Mary is nodding no. I'm gonna second it just to be on the safe side.
When in doubt, let's third it.
The reason I don't think we're seconding it, I'm sorry, is that we're voting on the one emotion. We don't have to vote on the amendment and then the motion. So we're voting on the motion with the friendly amendment one time. So. I think the person who seconded originally, which is Maya, you just have to say you're okay with it, right?
That's what I was trying to do.
Good. Well, good. Thank you. You're okay with it. Then let's 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 call the vote. Unless there are any other comments. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion with the friendly amendment, please raise your hand. Okay, we are passing the this motion with seven votes yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Now that's a good example of teamwork. All right, now we're moving to this the next item for action, which is consider the resolution for the. Twenty twenty-two ten authorizing community benefits contract. Right. So I think, oh, Mary. Mary.
Point of information on the item briefing summary. It says December 1st and it says item for future action. Was that just a misplaced document in the packet or are we? Or it shouldn't say the 15th and it should be an item for action.
Thank you for bringing that up. I noticed that this afternoon and Lisa uploaded the correct document with the correct date. If the document is correct with the wrong date, so it is now correct on Board Book. It's been uploaded to say. Item for action, December 15th. And I didn't notice it till this afternoon when I was looking at it in great detail. So it's been corrected on Board Book. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so I think that I'm supposed to just outline this and I'm. We have, this is the second time we've we've brought this up for an item for future action. Now tonight, we have it on for action. It is the resolution to for the community benefits bidding process that. Is it's in your packet and it's our intention is to begin to. To do a pilot of putting the requirements from a community benefits bidding into our process. Starting in January, so for the Camus Ridge project that's coming right up. And we are taking the the tactic of putting all of the requirements that would be in a community benefits. Agreement or bidding process for certain identified contracts. To to be able to learn from it. We'll gain data from it. We'll see how it's gonna work. We know many of our community partners are are embarking on this as well, so we have a chance to learn from it. And so what you see before you is that proposal. I see Mary has her hand up.
Are you entertaining comments or debate or I just there's a couple of things I would like to say. Just tell me when.
Well, typically, we would make a motion, I believe, at this point. And then we are open for discussion. So do we have a motion?
I'm happy. I move that the board adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash ten authorizing community benefits contracts.
Do we have a second? Great. So Martina's moved and Laurel has seconded the motion. Now we would love to hear comments and discussion. Mary.
Thank you. I. Today, we received several emails saying I support the roofers. Well, I support the roofers too, but I support kids. That's what we're here for. So I have to back up a little bit. When I first heard about the the CBA, the Community Benefits Agreement back in spring of 2019, I thought it was a good idea. I thought it demonstrated that the school district wanted to be. Practice sustainable business practices, have good ethics, be a good community partner. I thought the concept of equity and wages. in local companies was a good idea. However, in the last two years, this is seems to be spun out of control. I don't understand why we're getting emails from the roofers. I mean, I understand, but I don't understand why it's our concern as a school district that, uh, a roofer in Portland, you know, was able to have carpal tunnel surgery. So I just think this is out of control. I wonder what the politics are behind it because it's very, uh, dis- disconcerting to me. Um, and I, uh, I, you know, with all due respect, there has been basically, I don't think any analysis or certainly any equity lens applied to any of this. I asked some of these questions two weeks ago and there's no new information. Uh, you know, we have a snapshot in time in terms of the number of BIPOC and female members in the, in the unions. Uh, we don't have any longitudinal data. I continue to be concerned about the cost, um, the long-term cost of the district in providing this. And our long-term viability in terms of our ability to spend the bond money wisely. I'm afraid that this is going to be more expensive than we think and down the road, we're not going to have enough money to finish Camus perhaps, or even, uh, any work we'd want to do on Kelly as a result of some things. So I just, uh, feel like, uh, especially with the emails today about the roofers, feel like I have a lot more questions than I have answers right now. Thank you.
Mary, can I just respond with two things and then I see people have their hands up? Um, one is in your packet, I did do an equity, I did apply the equity lens. It was in the packet that went out.
I didn't think that really was helpful.
Okay, well, that was, I answered the equity lens question so that, that, and there was information in the packet. You can do your analysis on that yourself. The other thing is in the, uh, I just want to point out that right now as our motion, as the motion and the proposal is the, the, the trades that are identified that we are talking about that will be subject to this pilot for the CBB would be the, um, framing, drywall, ceiling systems, plumbing, mechanical, which is in parentheses HVAC, fire sprinklers and electrical. So those are the trades that are included in this pilot. When, so we're proceeding to try out cautiously, hoping that we will achieve the benefits for our community. So I don't know who was first. I think Gordon was first and then Maya and then Laurel. Is that the order?
I think Maya actually was before me.
Great. Then Maya, go for, go.
Thank you. Um, Judy, you already covered something I was going to say, which is, um, it's, it's as decision makers, it's our responsibility to apply the equity lens. And I appreciated it having it embedded in the, um, in the packet and made it a lot easier than having to pull it up. Um, and, and every time we use it, it becomes a little bit easier, um, to, to simply move through. So I, 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 um, I appreciate Mary, your, your point about that you support students. And it's interesting because I came at it with the same value system in mind, but I came to a different conclusion. For me, um, this, this is a way of acting as a responsible member of the community at large, but even more so for me, what this, um, feels like is this feels like investing in the future workspace of our students who we are telling over and over and over that there are multiple pathways to a successful and fruitful life. So I, I see the correlation there and it, and it feels like not supporting all aspects of the build, including the roofers, um, is akin to, to, to not supporting the pathway to higher ed. I, I, I personally feel like there's a direct relationship between what we offer our students during K-12 and where that leads them. Um, and, and this is one of the ways that we help to shape a, a, um, a community that is offering wages, but more importantly than that, care for families of the laborers, um, and that to me is, is crucial as we think about this. To me, this is about our students. It's about our students and where they're going to be down the line.
Gordon.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to, to clear up a couple of things. And then I'll say, well, while I'm saying this, that I, at whatever is the right point, I would like to make an amendment to include, or I will be making an amendment to include, um, to add glaziers and roofers to the list of, of trades here. So first of all, this is not about union versus non-union. It's about contractors who provide full family medical insurance and meet other standards of community benefits without increasing the cost to the district in any way. I think it's about students for the reasons that Maya said of creating living wage career paths for our own students. But also, you know, as I've said a couple of times before, the single most important factor determining educational outcomes is the economic stability of students' families. There are almost 200 families in our community who are supported, in our local community who are supported by people who do roofing work for a living, including parents of 4J students. And if we can act to ensure that those families have affordable health insurance at no cost to the district, I think that's a, a great thing and a critical thing for us to do. So in the past, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but to reprise what I took away from the last time, we talked about this at the last meeting, there were two concerns, uh, I, there were two concerns raised. I think there were, as I heard, there were not really concerns raised about the glaziers. I, I think we might be in a uncontroversial consensus position about that. The two concerns that were raised about roofers were not that it would increase the cost of the contractor, run out of money for, for Camus or other projects. But, um, first that there might not be enough local contractors to, enough qualified contractors to bid the work. Or that it would become more expensive because the work would be done by Portland-based contractors and then we'd end up paying travel costs and per diems for people coming down from Portland and staying overnight. And that if, you know, in the, in the language we have now, it says if the superintendent believes that the superintendent's jurisdiction, that either there weren't at least three qualifying bidders, or that it's going to raise costs or slow down the timeline, that the superintendent, at her own discretion, has the ability to rebid the work without the community benefit requirements. There was a concern raised about that was like, well, what if that takes too much time and we can't do it in time for, in time for the project to go ahead on its normal timetable. So the information that we, that we've gotten in the last week, not just people saying, I support the roofers, but we got information that there are almost 200 roofers who work in the local community, that the contractors who are based in Portland actually use local employees. So even if the address is in Portland, the people who will be getting those jobs and getting the health insurance are in our community. And I think most importantly, right? So that means if that's true, it won't raise the cost because we won't be paying any commuting cost or overnight per diems cost. And if that turns out to be wrong and it does raise the cost, the reason why I think the fail-safe that we have built into this, which is for the superintendent to, to scuttle that and rebid the work is okay, is that the roof is one of the last things that goes on. Or so it's not, we're going to, I assume, I don't know, but I assume we're going to be starting this work. Or we're at least going to be putting out the bids pretty soon after the start of the new year. And all of the work of the excavation and the foundation and putting in the electrical and plumbing underground and putting up the walls, all of that has to happen before you get to working on the roof. And so if it was excavation, it might be true, but I think given the roofing, I don't see, it seems to me we'll have plenty of time. So for those reasons, because we put in these fail-safe provisions that I, I believe were put in by district council and facility staff, thinking smartly about wanting to anticipate every, every possible situation and make sure that we can stay on budget and on timetable. To me, it seems that they would work. And given that they will work, um, that we have an opportunity here to do right by families in our community, including parents of students and in creating living wage pathways for our own students. So sorry to have blabbed on, but that's my, I, I hope that that clarifies some of the issue.
Uh, Laurel and then Alicia.
Gordon, can you make your amendment though official so we can second it and be talking about your amendment as well?
I'm happy to do that, Judy. Do you want to handle this a different way?
I would like to just have Alicia speak and then we can go ahead with the amendment. You signaled that you want to do one. That's great. But I think Alicia had her hand up before that.
Well, I'm going to talk now and then Alicia can. Um, so um, the, the reality is, is providing healthcare for people that work for us should be just a basis of what we work from. I was dismayed to learn after I got on the school board that we pay people at below the, the federal poverty level. Some of our, our, what we pay people ourselves at the school board. And I hope while I'm on this board, I can be helpful in changing that and changing the minimum that we pay people. The other part of it is it is paramount that we understand if we're helping students, these are parents of students. And I, I loved how you put it Gordon, like it, you said it with the data, so good job. But there's enough, it, it makes a difference in the student and the family and the, um, and the individuals. We're not just helping the privileged students. We're helping all students. And if we mean that, we follow through with this. And the thing that I like about this, because with the equity lens, it's just, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty obvious. If you had done the work and applied the equity lens, you can see exactly what, what's missing if you don't use it. But we also have a fail-safe with, um, was what Gordon said a better, but I really want to put that in the front of everybody's mind. This is a win-win. So when you get healthcare, but also say things are not working out or it's too expensive and you could see that it's not going to budget out, well, it goes back out and it doesn't take forever. We know that the, you know, you can put these out. They don't take forever. And, um, without the, the community benefits agreement, I'm, I want we're leaders in this community. So as being a leader, and I like what you said Judy about working with other like Link, Lane Community Colleges doing it and, um, we haven't heard of any, um, negative effects from it. I'm just excited that we can take our, our role as, you know, what did I read? We have, do we have, how many employees? We have a ton of employees, but we also not just our own employees, we hire contractors. We're part of all of this. We're part of this community, all of us. And so as such, it's important that we, um, walk the walk and talk the talk and really follow through on, you know, kind of those, um, can't think of the words. I have had a really hard week. Um, the values that we try to, you know, impart in our, in our kids as well, our students. So this is, this all goes together. Thank you.
Alicia.
Thank you very much, Judy. I always appreciate getting to talk construction because, uh, you know, I don't do it. It's not something we do, many of us on this school board. So we're, we're learning as we go and, um, I have, uh, listened to my colleagues and people have made very good points about, you know, concerns I had around equity, uh, in the trades and that we could have input or we could have influence. And I think that's important. Because like Laurel said, we are, we are community leaders. So I would say it's not as clear. I mean, we make it sound very clear like if we've got this out with the superintendent, if we, if the bid comes in too high, I'm just, I'm, I'm having a hard time with that. Not enough to make me not move forward with this. But, um, so if we put out bids and we bid, um, the, some part of it and people know we're, we're not bidding non-union shops, we're not taking bids, or we aren't going to take from people who are not providing full healthcare or whatever, they aren't going to bid. So there's not a way to know that we could have got it for less or that it's out of, it's higher, a lot higher. I, I, I guess I, I, being a good steward of the public funds, say that being a good steward is also making sure that the employees get, uh, uh, you know, the benefits they need to survive and to thrive. Uh, I also am curious about how, so I don't know that there's a way that we're going to be able to know that. Um, again, if somebody has some insight, uh, but the folks I've talked to say there's not really a way to prove that it won't be more money to the district, uh, that it could be more money to the district. And then we just have to decide, are we good with that? Are we okay with that? You know, is that, that's, that's important for us. Um, and, and that's okay. Uh, also, I, I, I appreciate that people are talking about, um, local workers. Because we want to be able to raise, uh, have our students learn and work in their own community and not have to go to Portland. Uh, because that's where all the construction is coming from. So I want to make sure down the line that we have a way to make sure, you know, to check in with Camus and be able to say, yeah, we actually used local folks and they were local. You know, I'm always joking about when architecture firms come, okay, do you have any architects from 4J? And lo and behold, they do, some of them do. And, and that's just one of the things that I think we need to ask in this, uh, process. I appreciate everybody's, uh, moving it forward. It is a little bit being on the cutting edge. As much as we say Lane County or LCC, but you know, we are kind of leading the way on this. So, um, being very thoughtful about it and, uh, and looking at how we can, um, admit when we aren't going to know, uh, but be okay with that and then, um, uh, create a process so we can know. Uh, and that's, that's what I'm excited about. And I appreciate everybody that's worked on this and is trying to do our best, uh, to make, to make this happen. So didn't really have a question, just had some statements. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay. So Gordon, did you want to make an amendment?
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to, so that, just so everybody knows where it is, under the air force, so be it resolved, under point one, it says this will apply to tier one subcontractors, which means contractors who contract directly with the general contractor in the following trades. And then it lists, uh, framing, drywall, ceiling, plumbing, mechanical, fire sprinklers and electrical. And my amendment would be to add to that roofing and glazing, which is glazing, putting in the glass. And if it's, you know, these came out a little different ways. The last time we talked about it, if it makes more sense to have two different amendments, so we can vote on roofing and then on glazing, um, I'm okay doing it either together or apart.
I would request separate, please.
Okay. So then I will, uh, I'll make an amendment now on roofing and then reserve the right to make a second amendment after that on glazing.
Do I have a second? Uh, Maya, Maya is seconding the amendment. So Gordon has made the amendment and Maya's seconded. Now do we have a discussion on the amendment? I'm looking for hands. I, I actually. Were you raising your hand, Alicia?
Yes, I was, but I couldn't find my little hand raiser. But if you want to go first, Judy, I'm good with that.
I just, I, I guess, um, I've been really studying this issue for a while. So, um, I think I just want to bring up a couple of points that haven't been brought up about the roofers. First of all, I've been working really hard on this community benefits bidding process and I'm really excited about 4J taking a step to try this as a pilot. I really am. And I think it's very critical as we move forward to work in partnership. And so I listened really closely, closely at our last conversation about this from our, our maintenance, you know, from, uh, the facilities director and the, um, operations directors. And I, I really understood that some of the issues with the roofing contractors were the, the businesses actually are in Portland or Salem or outside of our area. So I am, I really want local workers absolutely full benefit. I, all the points my, my peers have made on the board, I totally support. But I also would like to see that we have some local businesses, so the profits stay in our community and we really build a robust economy here. So, and my, and the, at least the roofers that I, I saw were all out of the area. The other thing about local workers, and I'm really happy, I, I understand there's a 60-mile radius that is considered local, which could very well mean a lot of our school district families working in our community. It could be, you know, 60 miles out. So I'm not saying it is or it isn't. But this, this, um, this, uh, community benefits, uh, bidding process that we're trying out gives us a chance to gather data and know that. Cause I want to benefit everyone from it. So I'm probably, I'm going to vote against the roofers being added for those reasons at this time. I don't know that we have local roofers right now that. I don't know that we have local roofers right now that would qualify and I, I. I don't know, uh. We, it is hard to figure out the costs, that's what I learned from fate others. I'm willing to pay a little more if we really support workers, so I'm not against that in the long run, I'm prepared. But um, that, that's my reason, I, those are, those were some of my thinking as I considered adding roofers. So um, Alicia, you were next and then um, I see Laurel, Maya and Gordon.
Thanks Judy. I, I had some of the same questions you proposed and I guess one of my questions is. Just because we pass it tonight and if, if the amendment passes, the amendment passes, but if it doesn't, would. We haven't had time to really vet that, or I haven't to, you know, to ask and to say. Are there local roofers, you know, again, not my industry, love watching HGTV, but it doesn't make me an expert in construction. So um, I, I just, I, I would, I would want that answered, uh, that local question about roofers and glazers. Before I could vote on this, so um, if I vote no, it doesn't mean that if we can't, if we, if there's a way to bring it back to do a little. Deeper look to see what is local, um, would really be helpful for me and I don't think we have. We can't add to this at a later time, but I just want, that's my two cents, thanks.
Um, I don't know who was next in line, so I'm just going to go. Do, do you guys know who went up next? Maya?
Well, when you raise your hand, you get put in the order, so um, like the top. The top person is Laurel than me than Gordon, like that automatically happens in Zoom. Which I just learned after almost two years of Zooming, but that's why we jump around.
I just.
So.
Tonight, wonderful, so then it's Laurel.
Okay, um. So. I think there's a lot of hesitancy not based on pure facts, we've had people tell us. And not just district staff and I just want to reiterate. We are the deciding board, so we can't just be basing our decisions of. Off of worries of district staff. We have to take, be in the leadership role here. So. The reality is. Picking some people to have health care and others to not, when we have the ability to have, to allow this for everybody and. We have, we have the knowledge and the argument, we have people that wrote us and said how vastly it was important to them. And I think it's just heartless to, to just. Pick and choose who gets healthcare when we, we have the ability. To vote for it and there's a fail safe if it doesn't, if it, we're not getting. The contracts, as far as I understood, maybe Gordon could answer that. Cause I know I had read about it, but I, perhaps I'm wrong, is that part of the fail safe is if everybody's from out of area and cost more than. They, Sydney can send it back. Without the, the community based agreement.
The fail safe is that if they cost more Laurel, there is.
Which is how that goes together. I think there's a lot of, I mean, it's, it's crazy to sit in a board meeting and hear such Republican values from people that don't say they're Republican. It's just. Unbelievable to, of the idea that we have the ability to vote for healthcare and for people and then. Just. Not do it and think it's okay, it's just, it's. It breaks my heart because we have the ability and it's not going to kill us and we have the budget and we can absolutely do it and there shouldn't, if. If we're guessing or maybe there could be something, it should be the maybe is, yeah, let's do it. And then we can vote again if it's not working absolutely right, but I bet you, because we've heard from other entities in town, it does work.
Thank you, all right Maya.
I apologize for having my screen off, but my internet is unstable, um, so I um. I, I appreciate that last point that Laurel made in combination with Alicia's concerns about. Being able to revisit things, it goes in both directions, but to bring it back to the equity lens, this um. This, this agreement is, is not just a, a business agreement.
Whoops, we lost.
Who was left out, I'm not comfortable saying, um, everybody else is going to get, ah. My back, can you hear me now? Yeah? Okay, I, I don't know where I took off, but I'm just going to go back a little bit, but for me, when I use that equity lens and.
Oops, you're going in and out, I'm sorry Maya, we just lost you again.
Values, I think I'm frozen again. I, you know what, let Gordon go first and I'll come back, maybe if my internet gets more stable, um, but I would like another shot at my statement, I'm sorry.
All right Gordon.
Thank you. First, I just want to appreciate Judy, you've been a leader on this for. I don't know how long we've been doing this, a year, more than a year, and if we've come down an opposite size of roofers, that doesn't change any of that, I appreciate. I appreciate your role in this. Um, and I know this has been complicated and maybe it's the kind of thing that like makes everybody's eyes glaze over if you're not. Already neck deep in this stuff, but I just want to go back over, because I think we do have more information than some people, than, than maybe apparent. On glazing, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I know that. Kyle Tucker and Ryan Spain are on the call, so could correct me if I'm wrong. What I remember from the last meeting was them saying that there are two local glazing contractors who do most of the work locally and so they thought glazing. Would not be an issue, again, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, on the roofing, I believe there is one contractor who is local. And then the roofers union said, oh, but there's actually the, all these other contractors who are based in Portland who use local labor. So you know, there's not, there's nothing in our CBA, obviously we want the, the labor to be local. We can't say, like, there's no way to legally require that, which is why that's not. In our CBA, not going, saying we're going to go outside the CBA, there's certainly no guarantee that we're going to get a local contractor or, or local workers, we're just going to get. We're just going to get people who get worse health insurance. So the, so the, I just want to point to again, the, where the fail safe is, is in. Point four, under the therefore. So be it resolved, which says the superintendent shall reserve the right to bid or rebid work without the requirements of the CBA. When bidding participation under the CBA does not provide sufficient coverage, i.e. a minimum of three qualified bids. Or would cause significant expense or delay. So obviously the three qualified bids, which is standard language, is designed to ensure. A, a basic level of competition and the significant expense or delay, this is entirely at the superintendent's discretion, there's not like some other board that is going to arbitrate, oh. Do we think it was really. Signif, was the expense really significant? So there's a, you know, there's a kind of complete way out of this at the discretion of the superintendent. Um, I do, I know that we're trailblazing in terms of K-12, I know that LCC has this and has. All trades in it, which is not to say that we know exactly what's going to happen in the future, but to me, given the ability to. To say, we're going to, we're going to play a significant role in making sure these are. Jobs with good health insurance for our students and for our students' parents. And it looks like it's going to work out, and if it doesn't work out, we have enough of a fail safe. So I think we do have the information to go forward on both, and again, if I've. If there's something I've mischaracterized from Ryan or Kyle, I would invite them to correct me.
So I, um, I just have two other comments too to follow that Gordon, so I want to say. I did do my own research, I didn't rely on anyone else, I got information, I called businesses and did my own research on all this, so I am making a decision as a leader. And I also believe in universal healthcare and would love every individual to have healthcare, so that's not what we're debating today in my mind. And so I just wanted to bring that up and um. I. Wanted to also say I talked at length to LCC and they're, they are ahead of us, but they don't really have data, people don't know yet, the only data. Came from Lane County at, on, on two different projects, so I just, I think we're all learning and I think we're really happy to be in there learning with people. But we aren't withholding, you know, there, it could cost more, it might not cost more, we're going to find that out, so. Uh, Maya, your hand's up and hopefully you're more stable now, that'd be great.
Um, I hope I'm more stable as well, um, I just got to hear everything, so that's a good sign. So um, the point that I'm going to zero in on that I was trying to make is, is one about how this is a, this is a business agreement, but it is also an expression of our values. And, and when I, when I think of excluding one group or two groups out of this large list and I think about the equity lens. I, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable saying that these things are a whole value for, for some and not for others, when we do have that, that fail safe. So if we find ourselves needing to use that, I, I feel like that is, that it was. It, it, it's a brilliant inclusion in, in the plan, so I, I, I feel really strongly that when we. Look at the question in the equity lens, when we think about the intention of this policy or this agreement beyond the strictly business and building components. And what it means in terms of, of a commitment to being part of a community. Um, and, and in terms of, of who we will be leaving out, I think it's really important that we make every effort to make sure that. Our building can, can, that we can, we can say we're leaders and we can tout that from the top to the bottom. That this is, this is something that we can say happened at least on this one building to start, and if it's a pilot, it's really important that we. We go into the pilot with the understanding that, that it's not necessarily. Exactly how it might look in the future, but to do a pilot, you need to kind of jump in and, and appreciate that, that there's some. Some risk-taking that happens, so I, I um. I personally, I, I personally do not support excluding any of the, the building community.
Mary. Oh, Martina, sorry.
You know, I was actually just going to, to speak to the fact that this is a, a trial basis in a pilot project, but Maya just brought that up and so, um, I think the point has been made.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, I'm rereading your analysis Judy, or your, your snippets of conversations with people. And it says, quote, "I spoke with someone involved with the University of Oregon's Project Labor Agreement, PLA." "The PLA is different than a CBD or CBA, but has many of the same requirements and goals, he reported that." "One, it drove costs up two to five percent, in some areas they struggled to get bids, especially union bids." "Three, difficult to get data on diversity, except in the category of veterans, both men and women, because they work with local organizations and serve vets." So again, this just, uh, to me continues to muddy the water and uh, you know, we could. I, I just wish we'd stop and think about this a little bit longer. Cause this is, is not providing the type of information I need. And uh. You know, when I read the equity tool, it says, well, you met with someone from the trade unions, you know, so. It seems a little bit self-serving, I just think the analysis is, is faulty for my, my satisfaction and I am continuing to be concerned about the cost.
Any other comments? So I believe we are ready to vote on the amendment. And the amendment is to include the roofers, is it, Martina, you want to remind us of the amendment before we vote? Oh wait, Alicia.
Yes, thanks Judy. I, I actually, it's, um, I appreciate the conversation, uh, I learn a lot from my fellow board members. Because, you know, everybody comes at it from a different perspective. I appreciate that what I'm hearing, you know, it's a pilot, let's give it a shot. Um, I'm very curious and hopefully we'll have a. An opportunity here from staff about how they're going to assess, uh, how effective this was and. I know that they probably haven't had a chance to look at, at how that's going to happen. I think making statements like, it's not going to cost anymore, we, we don't know. But we can also be okay with that. Um, and then we can be able to honestly share with other government entities. Uh, how it really worked and where it worked and where we might tweak it, because again, I think we're on the cutting edge. What's really hard sometimes though is uh, when we don't agree that, you know, we're um. By our fellow board members kind of put in this place of being words in our mouth or, or. Certain things assigned to us, I absolutely believe everyone should have healthcare, it's odd that I have to say that, I never said that it wasn't. I do appreciate uh, that I got, might be, I'm guessing I'm being called a Republican, just so you know, both my, I raised in a Republican household, got to admit it. Very strong uh, understanding of, of uh, of, and appreciation. Uh, for people who are Republican and how they, what they believe, as long as their movement takes forward. So just, um, just wanted to, just wanted to mention that, I know we have a lot of passion behind this and sometimes. That gets ahead of us, but uh, but I don't. I, I, it's for me, it's, I'm willing to pay more. For better. Care for our, our contractors, our subcontractors who, as you mentioned, are parents and have students in the district. I, I do, I'm very interested in the data on local, I know we can't call that out or make that part of it. But that's, that's an interesting place for us, I think, to be, um, to make sure we are looking at, at that and just seeing what it, what it brings forward, thanks.
Anyone else have a comment before we vote on the amendment? Okay, Martina, will you remind us of the amendment?
I think I'm going to have Gordon remind us of the amendment, just so that I don't get it wrong, and we're doing this in two parts, am I right? Yes, okay.
That's right, so this, this amendment is to add. Roofers to the list of trades at the end of sentence one, under therefore so be it resolved. So it would now say that, you want me to read that whole sentence or is that clear enough?
I would find it to be clear enough, so I don't know if I count.
Gordon, read the whole sentence.
Okay.
So then I'm going to call the vote, all those in favor of the amendment, uh, as just read, please raise your hand. So we have. Martina. Gordon, Laurel and Maya voting yes. And all those opposed, same sign. Alicia, Judy, Mary voting no, so the amendment passes with a four, uh, yes vote and a three no vote. Okay. Gordon, do you want to make your second amendment?
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment that, uh, we add. Glaziers or glazing, which is the glass for, for people who are wondering what the word is, to that same list.
So Gordon moves, we add glaziers to the, the um, list of, of contractors. Maya seconds the motion, any discussion about glazers? I will talk, I'm going to say, I, I'm, I'm going to support the glazers being added because I do feel confident we have local businesses. That, that we can, uh, that will be um. Qualified to bid on this and um. They do lose, use local labor, so. Anyone else? So all those, I'm going to call the question for the um. All those in favor of adding glazers to the list of contractors that will come under the CBB pilot we're doing, uh, raise your hand. So we have one, uh, Gordon voting yes, Judy voting yes, Martina voting yes, Alicia, I think your hand is up. Alicia voting yes. Laurel voting yes and Maya. And all those opposed, same sign. And Mary voting no, so the, uh, the amendment passes with a six yes and one, one no vote. So now we go back and vote on the full motion?
That one I can remind us of, because that one is my motion, so um, to remind us, it's, I moved with the board, adopt resolution twenty-two-ten. With the two amendments we just voted on, authorizing community benefits contracts.
Any other conversation? Then all those in favor of passing the community benefits bidding. Motion that's on the table, raise your hand, please. motion that's on the table, raise your hand, please. We have six votes, yes, Gordon, Judy, Martina, Alicia, Laurel, and Maya. All those opposed, same sign. Mary. So the motion passes with a six yes vote and one no vote. All right. We have a community bidding, benefits bidding process to figure out. All right. Going forward, our next item, our items for future action, I think, yes. And we want to consider the renewal for public charter school contract with Twin River Charter School.
I'd like to introduce Cassandra Caymans and Eric Anderson, who will present on this item.
Thank you, Sydney. Can you hear me? I'm on headphones. I don't know if they work. Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Newman and Superintendent Vanderkar. My name is Cassandra Caymans, and I am the Curriculum Administrator for Extended Learning, and also the Charter School Liaison this year. I am here tonight to present you, to present to you information regarding the request to renew the charter for Twin Rivers. Twin Rivers is currently in their sixth year or fifth, five and a half years, as you heard earlier this evening from Jeff Parker, of being a charter school for our district, and they have requested a renewal of their charter for an additional five years. This is in accordance with the Oregon Revised Statute 3338, and also the Board Policy LBE. As the school board, it is up to you to determine whether or not to approve the request for renewal. And according to Board Policy LBE-AR and the ORS 338, the board must base their decision on a good faith evaluation of certain components. These components include compliance with all applicable state and federal laws, compliance with the charter or contract of the public charter school, compliance with any renewal criteria specified in the charter of the public charter school, if the charter is meeting or working towards meeting student performance goals, and if the charter school is fiscally stable and uses sound financial management system. Earlier this month, a charter school review team meant to review all of the required components for evaluation. And the team's findings are detailed in the Item for Future Action Report that is in the board packet, along with additional materials to help the board make this good faith evaluation. I'd like to share a little bit with you about Twin Rivers, in case you are unfamiliar with the school. It is a charter school that gives students the opportunity to learn core content while integrating it with hands-on outdoor studies. Students spend half of their time in classroom and half of their time outdoors doing projects. The school was recently approved to offer a natural resources career technical education program, a CTE program, as we often call them. And this CTE program is also working in conjunction with Oregon State Parks on the development of Logjam State Park on the Willamette River. It's a tiny little park that's about two miles long that they have control over, and the school is actually gonna get to do the development of what happens out at that park as part of their project. Twin Rivers, their demographics is made up of 79% white students in comparison to 68% that we have across the district. They have almost twice the percentage of students on IEPs as our district average. And their enrollment over the past year since the creation of the charter school has slowly been increasing. This year, there has been a shift with more students enrolling at the lower grades, grades eight through 10, which will eventually lead to an increase in their overall population in the upcoming years. In regards to the Charter School Review Team findings, the team determined that the overall recommendation is to approve the renewal. There are a few areas of concern that were raised by the team, but these are areas which we know will be addressed as they continue to grow and develop their program. The details of these findings and areas of concern can be found in the report that's been provided in the board packet. And it is the recommendation of the Charter School Review Team and that of the superintendent that the school board approve the request for the five-year renewal of Twin Rivers Charter School. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And if I don't have an answer, I will be able to get it for you before your next meeting on January 12th, when there will be a public hearing in regards to the renewal, as well as your time to take action on the renewal. Thank you. See, Gordon?
Mary, you're in line. Gordon?
Thanks. I don't have a question. I know there are people who know the school better than I do, but I just wanna say I know it's on, and I have been really impressed with the creativity and the quality of education that they provide to the kids there. I think it's a great school, so I will certainly support renewing it.
Mary?
Thank you. I think the Twin Oaks Charter School does a great job. However, we had this conversation a couple of years ago when COBRA wished to have their, and I believe, which I'm a story too, when they wanted their charter renewed. And I'm not speaking against that, but there was a concern by the board about the demographics and the mixed demographics of the, both those charter schools, and that they weren't necessarily in line with what was the more standard demographics in the district. So are there ways that that might be addressed in the future? And I understand it's a specific population that they're working with, and they do a good job. And so that's, I'm not criticizing that. I'm just thinking that demographics aren't really reflective of the district. And what's the plan to rectify that? And maybe our board representative on the Charter Council can also speak to that. Thank you.
What I could tell you, Mary, at this point, is that from, having just done all of the annual reviews that you guys will receive in the next month, Twin Rivers actually mirrors the district more closely than most of our other schools, except for in that area of IEPs, where they have a higher percentage. It is, it's not, their demographics aren't as concerning to me as some of our other charter schools that are more desperate than what we have.
Right, and they have a very, very small student population, too, so.
Right, they only have, Twin Rivers has 48% or 48 students at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Maya?
I want to take a moment to just really appreciate what Twin Rivers has worked to provide as an option for students in our district. I recall so many times hearing our former superintendent define equity as simplified but very poignant as access and options. And this is an option that is not available via any other avenue. We do have Echo, and we do have another charter school, but this is an absolutely unique program that is very compelling for a lot of our students and serves to pull students back into school so that they can do all the things that they need to do in order to move forward post K-12 and be successful. So I also am very keen on supporting this proposal. And I just think it's important to recognize that that number 48, I know there's intention to grow, and I think that part of the part of the problem there is that it's a school that is very much reliant on in-person instruction. It's hard to go out in the, you know, parks and work on projects when school is exclusively remote. So I want to give them space for being able to continue to grow. And I feel confident that Dr. Breslow's leadership is headed very much in that direction with a keen eye on that. And I think that will also impact the demographic concern that Mary raised. The more students that come in, the more likely we will see more and more diversity.
Any other questions? Okay, so I believe at our next meeting, we will be voting on the charter, so.
You'll also have a 30-minute public hearing for the Twin Rivers population to speak.
Thank you. Oh, I did have one very quick question. What is the capacity?
They are requesting a cap of 100, which is what their current contract is. And it's so that they can have 20 students per grade level, grades eight through 12.
Great, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on the agenda for future action is to approve the superintendent's evaluation process. And we presented that at our last meeting as an item for information. I believe we had a work session on it as well. And there was one edit, one change that was requested, which was to not have any items under the goals and objectives in bold, but to consider all of them in the evaluation. So that has been removed in the packet this time. And as you know, you know, it's our responsibility as a board, and very important one, is to evaluate the superintendent each year. And so our timeline, we're a little bit behind our timeline. We'll be finalizing this in our January meeting. But then in February, we'll have a mid-year review, performance review. It's optional. We'll talk and see if we want to do that, or if Sid wants one. And then in April, we'll do the full evaluation. And May, we'll start doing individual evaluations. We'll meet about it. And then we'll review it in May and present it in June. That's the timeline in here. And the superintendent has identified some additional goals to the ones that we have that relate to the 2020 strategic plan vision. Again, not to be confused with the year 2020, but seeing 2020. So that's, any questions about that? Any more conversation we want to have about the process? Okay, seeing no hands up, we can move to our next item, which is another item for future action. And this was brought up at, let me frame this one. It's about the idea of having time limits for the board comments. And just to remind the board, I brought up the suggestion of keeping the comments by board members to three minutes in my comments. And that's, I selected that amount of time because that's the amount of time we give the public to speak, to speak and give their comments. I just, and I want to just take a few minutes to share, you know, there's a history behind this. So when I first joined the board, the comments were at the beginning of the meeting, just like they are now. And I was instructed or suggested as a new board member that the comments were really on the agenda with the intention of talking about the work you've done in the district that, over those two weeks, report on committees that you are representing the board on, et cetera. And the reports took about two or three minutes. Then the comments were moved, again, this is during my tenure, to the end of the board meeting to ensure that the public got to hear the work of the board, because we were going so late in the session. And then later, they were moved back to the beginning of the meeting based on the board's vote. And it's been my observation that our comments have gotten to be longer and longer. Some of them go up to seven minutes in length and often cover items that we will be discussing later on the agenda, and board members would have a chance to express their thoughts. And our meetings have gotten really long and late. So I thought maybe one thing we could do is consider limiting our time in our comments. And that's really to frame this item on the agenda. So I had put three minutes. I would be open to other conversations and just open it for discussion. Maya?
I, as a person who has spent a whole lot longer at board meetings as a community member than as a board member, I appreciate the idea of limiting the comments. I do think that I've watched the pattern move from comments focused on committee reports and the like to commenting on broader issues. And I feel as though I'd like to find a way to create space in terms of a limited time that allows for us to be responsive to the things that happen in the community. I'm thinking about this week in particular. It would have been very difficult to approach the comments that needed to be said in a very short timeframe and still honor the requests of the community for us to make formal statements. I know we have received emails, I'm sure all of us did, for us to make a statement. And I think that, I think that the community member in me really likes the idea of the three minutes, but finding myself on the other side, and I feel like I'm understanding a little bit deeper about where people are coming from, I would push to have the time limit extended a little bit beyond three minutes. Maybe three and a half or four minutes would be ideal. Not everybody uses that. I know there's some people who are very quick with their commentary. And I think that having the opportunity, because later in the meetings, we don't have the opportunity to respond to folks. Like, there's no other point in the meeting tonight where we can talk about track and field. So it's really important that we have that space and that flexibility to address our community. And I'm not sure that it always is built into the meetings. So I would support a limitation, but with a little bit broader space.
Thank you. Alicia, before we move on, I just want to point out, Laurel O'Rourke had to leave the meeting for personal reasons. I hope everything's okay. But I just want to note she wasn't present, so. Alicia?
Thanks, Judy. Well, it's funny how it's evolved, this comment, because it used to be at the end of the meeting and when I, somebody finally voted me in as chair. No, actually, when I got the opportunity, I moved it for the very reasons you were talking, which is about Judy and Maya as well, that when the community comes and speaks to us, looking at them and go, hold on, I'll get to your comments around 10 o'clock. Didn't seem like the right idea. So I appreciate, I know Judy, it's your call as chair and leadership as to where you put it. So I hope you keep it right where it is. I appreciate that sometimes we just need to go a little longer. But if we could commit to three and then understanding that even if somebody said, tonight, I'm gonna go four, because it's really important that I say this, that we respect each other and know that we're all trying to get our comments into three. So I can go either way, but I will tell you, like most people after, about, see, look, you guys have all shut off, because I've been talking more than 90 seconds. So just keep that in mind, too, that about three minutes, you probably lose us, or a lot of folks. But anyhow, so the point is, please keep it at the beginning. I think it's good. Please remember that it's about committee reports where you get to talk about things you're working on. And as we kind of get into the flow again to where we're doing committees, we'll want to hear that. And I'm also fine if we limit it and somebody needs a little longer that day, that they just ask for our indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Any other thoughts? Gordon?
Thanks. I probably like, the one thing we all agree on is wanting to have shorter meetings. I would certainly like to see that, but I think there, maybe we all have ideas of what we would like to have, to make shorter. I think there are other things that we could shorten that would be more effective. And I don't think this has really been the problem, and I think it's, it's an important thing. I think it makes, so for me, I think it makes sense to talk about things other than recent work in committees. This is, you know, this is the one place where we can, as elected officials, communicate, you know, speak to the public about the issues that are before the board, whether they're on the agenda or not. I think it's a place for us to respond to public comments, because, I mean, as Alicia decided to say, oh, I'll get back to you at 10 o'clock, or even just to say, to kind of stare and have there be no response to public comments. Sometimes it's very awkward or feels, you know, disrespectful just to not have things acknowledged. And even, you know, and you mentioned Judy commenting about things that may be coming up later on the agenda. The place where I've seen most public participation or just watching fall off is as time goes by. And like, we have, you know, we have a bunch of stuff, and it's not just from people talking too long. We have, we need to get this report, and we need to get this report. We have, we need to get this reported and we need to get this reported. So we have things, you know, we often have some of the most important items coming up later in the meeting. And I think it's important and valid. So I guess I would say, I feel like what we have been doing is having three minutes as a goal or an aspiration, but not a hard timeline. Maybe it's gone as much as seven. I mean, obviously sure it has, if that's what you said, but I don't, I, I think that that's rare. So for me, I feel like it's working, it's working fine that we're, we have a goal, we're roughly sticking to it. We go over some.
Great. Anyone else? Martina.
So, you know, I, I appreciated that we kind of started with having a little bit of a historical understanding because I think this is one of those areas where just seeing the trajectory of how things have changed over time is really telling in the ways that community engagement with school boards has changed over time. I mean, certainly we're seeing nationwide that community participation and investment in school boards has changed dramatically, even in the time that I have served. So two and a half years, a pretty substantive change. And I do think it is really important to have some space where we can sort of speak more generally, particularly because, you know, we really are on this board trying to work hard to get our Robert's rules correctly and really use it as the tool that it is meant to be. And so we try to, you know, really, I think all trying to keep our comments during discussion to that very, you know, the very narrow issues that are on the table. So I, I do really find it valuable, whether it was last year or two years ago, I can't recall argued for putting it back at the beginning and feel very good about that. I do however, feel like we are really struggling, again, with time, as we've all talked about. And we're struggling often to get to the substantive work, as Gordon was saying, where people are dropping off and dropping off. We're, we're struggling to get the substantive votes that often people are here to, to witness and participate in until quite late in the evening. You know, it's, it's nearly 10 o'clock right now. And fortunately, this has been one of our shorter board meetings of the year, but it's, it's still quite late. And so I, I think that having something more than just like a vague intention, but something that's really a more concrete intention with the sort of humanistic approach that I liked the way Alicia said it, that a member could sort of request a bit of extra indulgence might be helpful. I also would think it would be helpful to have that timer on the screen, much though I found the, the gong sound a little funny. It, I do think it's helpful to see because it's really hard to know how long you've been talking. I have no idea how many minutes or seconds I've been talking now in these comments. And so I think having that there may keep us a little bit more honest and help us have a little bit more of a perspective. And that perhaps that can be something that we're all working on, not only in those comments, but in all of our comments. I've been really working hard over the last couple of meetings to say, you know, the point that I was going to make has already been made and let it go. Because even though I really want everyone to know in that moment that like I have that point too, and I think that thing too, if I'm repeating what one of my peers has just said, I'm really taking up a lot of extra time. So I would encourage us to have a more strong intention and clear guidelines to be clear about when we're asking to exceed that for the very important reasons, like Maya was mentioning, that there are times we need to have more time to speak to important issues and that we also really be checking ourselves overall.
Thank you. Mary.
Well, just a point of clarification, it's the chair's call that vote to move it to the, back to the beginning of the meeting was my decision because I initially had moved it to the end of the meeting. So we don't have to take a vote out. It's the chair's prerogative. You will know that I'm a proponent of the three minute limit. And I think it's just a basic batter, but a basic matter of respect. Certainly if you're in the middle of a sentence, you're not going to get cut off at three minutes, but it's just being respectful for other people's time. And then I'm going to pose one question. Will the students, when they come, also be subjected to this three minute limit? Or will we be giving them another, I guess, 20 minutes to talk?
Anyone want to have thoughts about that? I hadn't thought about.
I, I was not part of the previous subcommittee discussions, but I know that we have said that Maya, Laurel and myself will meet. So perhaps that can be one of the things that we'll talk about there. Is that acceptable?
Yeah. Probably good thing to decide before the orientation that we do. Yeah. In the past, I'm not aware of any of the students going longer. I think they followed the same rule, but I don't know that anyone articulated that to them. Any other comments on this item? So this is an item for future action, as we said. So I will be on the agenda and sort of what I'm definitely hearing, I was not proposing we move it to the end. So definitely we'll stay at the front. And since it's, but I, I think I'm hearing some feeling that it would be okay to, to have a soft, an idea of staying within three minutes, but it's a soft stop, but also saying if I have something more to say, you know, people could extend to four minutes or so. Up to four minutes, kind of having the ability to be a little flexible with that. Martina.
I, I, that's definitely what I'm hearing and perhaps I'm biased because that's what sounds good to me, but that is, it seems to me that that's what I'm hearing. But I also just wanted to briefly mention, you know, you know, Mary, you mentioned that it's, this is the, the preview of the chair. And you, you were totally correct. When Judy and I were discussing this and putting this on the agenda, we felt like this was an important place for us to, you know, maybe come to some agreement and have that discussion, which is why we chose to do it this way. You, you're totally right that you had, when you were the chair, you had every right to put it forward, put it back and do those things. And just in this particular circumstance, we felt it was really important that, that everyone kind of have the chance to have this conversation and that we discussed the sort of purpose and what we all had as a vision. And that just felt significant this time.
May I respond? Um, Maya has her hand up, but I'd like to respond, but go ahead and let my, my go, my go first.
No, I, I would prefer a connected conversation. You can respond first, Mary.
Well, no, I, I wasn't saying that it was my decision because I was chair, I wasn't trying to do a power play. And I'm glad you and Judy talked about it. I was just pointing out, because I didn't want us to go down the rabbit hole of a vote on it. Cause Judy had suggested we had to vote on it and you know, you don't have to. So I'm glad we had the conversation, but I don't want us to have a vote on it because it's, it's leadership's prerogative.
Thank you, Mary. I did, I, I didn't know that all this was so. Maya.
So I'm, I can appreciate that we have a desire to be flexible. I, I just hope that when a decision is made, there's also the, some, some thought given to how that flexibility will play out. I know a few meetings ago, I had a statement that went past the three minute mark before we had this conversation. And, and it was a little disconcerting to, to have myself cut off in the middle. And I, I just hope that we, we think about some sort of system to have in place to make sure that, that it's done respectfully and done in a way that doesn't add to us needing more mediation. Cause it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily feel good to, to not know that that's coming and to have it happen in the middle of, of your statement.
Thank you. Alicia.
Well, I'd like to propose that you make me timekeeper so that I can holler at people. No, just kidding, Maya. But here's the thing, Gordon, you said, you know, you've got things you want to say. Plus there are these committee reports. So I don't want to lose track of that because it just kind of came to me, which is if you're a person that ends up with like two committees, the two weeks before the meeting, you've got to report on that, but you also really are passionate about something that happened. I think that too should be given, like I've got my committee reports, I'm going to go a little long because I also really want to talk about X. Like today, I really would want to talk about this, but I've got these committee reports because this is a chance for us to hear, you know, what's going on in that committee that you're the only member of or what might be coming forward. So, so I think as we, as we figure it out, as we kind of norm ourselves as a group, I think, I think we'll work it out. And so Judy, I would just say, I think what I'm hearing is you've got the commitment from this group to try to shoot for three. We can go longer. No one's going to cut them off, but we're going to make that attempt. And that I think it is your call and you don't need to bring it back for us to vote. Thus shortening our meeting into next time we meet. Thanks, next year.
Martina.
Yeah, I, I appreciate Maya that you mentioned the way that sometimes like more informal or loose rules, restrictions, guidelines, whatever can end up sort of feeling worse in the moment. And so I want to, I want to agree that perhaps as part of our agreement, we're going to say that, you know, within bounds, we're, we're not going to interrupt one another. I think that we can all have a sort of reasonable expectation that if someone begins to filibuster the meeting, that the board chair might step in. And if we find ourselves in that situation, we're well, we're, we're well past needing mediation if we have filibusters, right? So, so perhaps again, we can all do the work to like, either have the timer up on the screen, have our timers open on our phones, just something to kind of be doing that self-check and that we will, we'll endeavor to be a little bit patient with one another. And also that we are going to try to bring ourselves into a little bit more of a, a tight timeframe.
So Maya.
I have, I have a very quick question. I'm just curious if the app that we use today that was a timer also has a stopwatch component so that you can keep track of how long you're going instead of having the gong go off, which is.
What I was thinking, I don't know, Lisa might know that. If she, if she doesn't, we'll find out. I was thinking that would be a good self-monitoring thing for sure. Yeah. And I guess I want to say, I don't like, I will not cut people off mid-sentence. I do let people finish. It is, it is something I don't like to do is cut people off when they're talking, but you have to be as graceful as you can with that, I think. So we will check about the, I like the idea of being able to have the visual and okay, I think I've heard people's opinions on this and it sounds like we are going to aim for three minutes, but there's, but we're going to self-monitor. Is that what I'm sort of hearing? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Well, I'm looking at the time, it's 10:04. And do people have the attention? We have one more item on the agenda, which is our working agreements. And we could go through one of those items tonight. And then we move into the whole section on communication. Martina.
Much though, I would love to check one off our list, given that it's 10. It's been a pretty emotionally challenging week for many. And one of our members, what, you know, isn't able to be here anymore, particularly when it comes to working agreements, I feel we should all be together. So I would, I would request that perhaps we table this for our next one. Whether we'll ever finish working agreements, who's to say?
Do I have any objections to that? I do, especially since the board, the, the member who's, is new and the working agreements are new. So I think it is important to have us all. Okay. So we're, the last item is items for future agenda. And I know that Maya has something for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I actually have two, but I'm going to start with the one that you are aware of. So I would, I would like to add to a future meeting and I would like to request that it be on the February 2nd meeting so that there's time for the, the group who has been meeting to meet on January 5th and for the, the, the subsequent work to be well attended to. So I would, I would like to add to the February 2nd meeting, an item for future action regarding a policy specific to racial harassment.
Do we have another person that would like to do that? I think we have show of hands. Yeah, good. I, I'm seeing a lot here. Oh, Mary, do you have a comment about that?
Point of order, we usually, when we make a request to put something on the agenda, don't specify a date. So it's been referred to leadership. That's leadership's prerogative, put it on September or February 2nd. It's just a matter of practice and protocol and past practices. So I'm not arguing with it. I'm not saying, don't do it. I'm just questioning the precedent that we could be setting. And then I want my hand up for the next item too.
Okay, I'd like to respond to that because I just actually got a text from Christine. I mean, I think, what if we could get it done earlier? What if we could put it on in January? Um, maybe your request is as soon as, if leadership would consider putting it on as soon as possible?
My, the February 2nd date comes out of my one-on-one meeting with the superintendent yesterday. We, we both thought that it was worthwhile to make sure that the time was given, to make sure that, that the work was done thoughtfully and not rushed and that with the meeting happening on January 5th and that we, we needed more time than just January 5th to the, what is it, 15th? What is? 12. Yes, absolutely. So, so there was, there was thoughtfulness behind my, my recommendation that it's February 2nd. I do understand that I'm not leadership, so it's not my prerogative. It is my suggestion based on the conversation that Superintendent Vanderkar and I had.
And, and Judy, leadership is already passed by the time we meet with Mika. We have leadership on the third. So we were doing math on our fingers pretty much and trying to make sure it worked. So leadership is already passed by the time we meet with Mika to complete the policy. So.
Well, I'm going to just say that we hear that it's urgent for everyone and we want to get it on as soon as we possibly can. So it sounds like the second is the most realistic, but we would probably entertain something if it was ready earlier. How's that? Okay. So do you have something more to say superintendent? Your next in line there. Great. Mary.
Well, I'm going to emphasize one more time that I am not opposed to it. I'm not opposed to the policy coming forward in a timely and speedy manner. It's just, we should acknowledge that that's setting perhaps a slippery slope precedent. That's all. And then my second point is, and this is because of, I'm frustrated by this, this is the fourth time, the fourth time that I have asked that we have a work session on climate change on the agenda. I have been told, yes, yes, yes. I don't see it on any upcoming agendas and not that the board members, Robassa's proposal isn't important, isn't critical. But again, it's been leapfrogged ahead and I'm just feeling like, you know, we, we seem to have no, no guiding rules or principles. So once again, I am asking that the board have a work session on the climate change issue, which is one of our board goals.
Do we have other board members that want to support that? We have, we definitely have more than more, we have three people supporting that. So that will go on leadership and we'll get a date. Maya.
So I have a second one. I, I do want to point out that this is not leapfrogged ahead. This started months ago when I requested an item for a future agenda to hear from Mika Contreras. And it turned into a yes, and then it turned into, let's have it with district staff. So this is, this is actually, I'm going for, for a couple of months as well. I, the second, the second thing I, I would like for us to consider adding to a future agenda. And this is something so that we can all be on the same page and understand. I think that there's some confusion and probably centered on the newer board members, myself and Laurel as to the role of, or how emails are responded to. And I would like to see that as sometime in the near future as an item for information, just so that we know and the community knows what, what it means when an email comes from the board chair versus other board members, but specifically the, the board chair, so that we just are all on the same page and have the same understanding and the community does as well.
Does anyone else want that added to the agenda for information? Or maybe that could go out in the superintendent's memo? We could write something.
If, if it goes out in the superintendent's memo, I just worry that the community doesn't have that same information. I know that as a, as a community member, I didn't always understand why emails were sometimes vague and sometimes detailed. So for me, this isn't just for us to receive that information. It's also for the community to receive that information. I think it would help them to, to know why, why there's more detail and less detail sometimes. And I think that that comes around decision-making and the like. And I don't think it needs to be a long session of information, but I think that it wouldn't hurt for it to be accessible to the community as well.
Alicia.
I'm thinking maybe Judy could just answer that during your chair's report next, next month. Appreciate that Maya. I actually remember when I started, it was like, could you put on the emails you answer? I, as board chair will be responding, no other board members will, because it used to drive me nuts. Like I'm not responding and I look like I don't care. But in our working agreements or somewhere, we do have that the board chair will respond. And obviously. And obviously you can get more details if you have details than if it's something that's coming up on a future agenda. So I think just maybe Judy, if you can clarify it, but I, I, it gets very dicey when we all try to respond. And, and so I really appreciate that that's how we do it. And I don't know Judy, if you put that on your emails, but as always, I request that something such as, as board chair, I'm responding. The other, you know, the other board members have read the email, but will not be responding. So I don't look like a slacker. Thanks.
I could add that, but Alicia, that means you haven't read my responses.
I think I have, but probably not all the way to the end. I'm sure you missed it on one. Thanks Judy.
Mary, Mary and then Gordon. Then we'll, yeah.
Well, again, I know there's some members of the board that feel like we don't have working agreements, but we do, because they don't expire. We have yet to agree on the, the proposed revisions, but it is very clearly laid out in the working agreements, at least as a basis for education of why it's done that way. Certainly we can change it. But I, I really don't think it's the superintendent's responsibility to put it in the Friday memo. It's our agreement. And you know, the superintendent really has nothing to do with it. So let's not, you know, punt, punt that, that hand it off the superintendent. We need to do it. And I'd like Alicia's suggestion that you as the board chair, explain what the process is. And then as we move towards the working agreements, that's probably something that'll get changed.
Gordon?
Thank you. I would actually, I think it would be good if it came up as an item for information, just to go back to the original thing, only because I think there might be some discussion on it. I don't think, as far as I know, I certainly have no question about what's in the working agreement, which is that it's up to the chair to respond on behalf of the board to all emails. But every once in a while, there have been responses that at least for me, raised a question of, well, does this really capture what, where the board as a whole is at? And so that thing, you know, without making more of it than it is, I think that it would be good to have a place to discuss that, whether it comes up as an item of information or under the working agreements or something. I don't think it's about what's in the working agreements about who responds, but about something about the, the frame of those responses.
So I'm going to go back to Maya, who made the request for the agenda item. So I'm, I'm very willing to address it in my, in my comments and we can put it on later, or do you want to, do you want to still keep your request as putting it on for sending it to leadership to put it on for a future agenda for information?
I, I, I think that it would be helpful to have it as an, an item for future or a future item for information, whatever, an agenda item. I think that, that you have a lot of things to include in your, your version of your personal statement. And I, now that we're committing to three minutes, I'd hate for your three minutes to be used up by this and then it not have the opportunity for follow-up questions. So I don't think it needs a ton of time allocated for it, but I think that it, it deserves its own space.
Martina?
Perhaps this is just a suggestion, perhaps since, you know, we have a goal of, of discussing communication, perhaps this is one of the elements of communication with the public. And so we could fit it in around those issues as well. Would that be fair? Again, I mean, I don't know if that's actually satisfactory because we don't have those currently scheduled up, like that's not queued up on the agenda. But maybe that's one of the ways that we can kind of like get that entree into this discussion.
Maya?
That, that feels reasonable as long as there isn't concern from other people that we're jumping ahead. It just feels like we're this far into the year. And if there's questions about this, that it should happen sooner than later. And I know that we get through one item at a time. So I, I, whatever, this is, this is my suggestion to the, to the leadership. And then this comes up, this is, this is your purview to decide. Whatever the, the place on the agenda that it comes up is up to you. I, it seemed to me that it would be an item for information. But if it's an item for, as you suggest, Martina, I also worry that it might turn into a, a much bigger thing than information than a discussion, but.
So let's get, make sure two other board members that want this to go forward to leadership and we'll come back with a decision of where to put it. Okay? So other people, how many other people want this on the agenda to send? Okay. We got our three people and it will go to leadership. Great. Any other future agenda items? Um, I'm, I'm going to put forward, I don't know if I do the same process because it goes to leadership, but I would like to discuss how the board's going to have the conversation about how we're going to use the equity lens. I'd like to put that on. And I do have some ideas of appointing a committee to, to help us, but I think that needs, I'm going to just, if other people agree with that, I will put it to leadership of putting it on the future. Martina says yes, Gordon. Okay. Great. Anyone else? Then I think the will of this group is to forget working agreements. We keep practicing working together this way. So I'm going to say there's nothing else on the agenda and I'm going to close this meeting of the school board at 10:18. Thank you, everyone.
See you all in the new year.